And I see 5:30. I call the June 14 Charlottesville Planning Commission meeting to order. At this time, I would like to hear. Public Commissioner reports. Can we please start with Mr. Mitchell?
Right. Let's see, there were about three meetings that my was involved in. The first was the BZA. We met to review an application for a rezoning or a zoning ordinance relief. The location was 1214 East Harris Street. And that's where the Harrison me come together in that little white building is right there on the end there. And what they wanted was our relief on the setback. They wanted to reduce the setback. And they want to install a vertical screen and a canopy. And we approved it because it just seemed like made good practice to do that. The Parks and Rec Group met the same day. There have been a number of personnel movements in Parks and Rec, a number of IRES and movements. Examples of the IRES are we've got a new playground technician, we've got a new urban forester, we've got a new youth programmer, a new gardener. Things like that have been happening. So, good news is we're moving people around, we're bringing people on board. But, the bad news is we're still down seven to eight FTEs in Parks and Rec. And you guys know what's happening with the lifeguards and the pools. We can't keep our pools open full time or keep them running concurrently because we were down about 35 lifeguards. We also got a debrief on the Tuntzler Park Improvement Project that we're working on. Just three things that jumped at me. Folks don't want to lose green space to increase the parking that we've got there. But they do want to add, bring more bleachers in for the B-ball courts. And they would like to upgrade and expand the shelter and configure it in a way that will allow for more programmatic activities. So, that's, those are the three high points of the feedback that I took away from there, that chat. Sent you guys a presentation from a UVA student, a couple of you guys have gotten back to me on it, about a vision for an urban food forest. And the vision is to have this in Washington Park on the salt fall field. And again, you guys have copies of that presentation. The LUPAC Group met. There were three basic topics we reviewed. One was a RAISE grant, R-A-I-S-E grant, for three notch trail. RAISE, the acronym stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure for Sustainability and Equity. The trail that they envisioning, that they're seeking a grant for will run from Blue Ridge Tunnel all the way to Charlottesville. And the objective is to share this with bikes and pedestrians. So, they're hoping to get somewhere around $2 million bucks to help them implement this three notch trail. Our director, Mr. Fries, gave an update. And I expect he's going to give an update tonight, so I won't walk through everything he said. But there was one thing that he had to remind everyone there about a couple of times. And it's good for us to remember this as well. The rewrite of our code is not form-based code. But, as Mr. Fries mentioned a couple of times, it does contain form-based elements. So, just something we need to remember as we're talking to people about this and certain form-based champions push up buttons on this. In Croze, there is a development opportunity, the Barnes Lumber Development Opportunity. This is an effort to revitalize a dormant site in downtown Croze. What they want to do is build a plaza with the related buildings and infrastructure and road networks. And right there, and if you guys go to Croze often, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Right there, adjacent to downtown Croze. This is not something that a developer can do by himself and make money. And so, what they've been working on is a public-private partnership. So, there'll be a developer, there'll be a for-profit developer involved, and there'll be a, the county and VDOT will be involved to help with some of the infrastructure and help with some of the network of roads. They spoke about this project in a way that suggested that they want to do this so that people don't have to come all the way to Charlottesville to spend their leisure dollars. They don't have, they can stay there and spend their dollars in Croze. I would remind you that we want Charlottesville to be a destination, a destination for Green County people, Lubbock County people, Nelson County people, Almarle County people. So, as we think about our transportation infrastructure and as we think about our parking infrastructure, we need to keep in mind that once people get here, they have to be able to get around easily. And frankly, have a place to park or they won't come because they'll be incented to do more projects like this.
Thank you. Rich, Mr. Bob, please.
I just had one meeting. It was May 18, the Citizen Transportation Advisory Committee. We had a presentation on city and counties' climate mitigation plans from both the city and the county. And we looked at a draft of the Unified Planning Work Program, which is available on the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission website for everyone to look at it. Basically, it identifies all the activities that are planning to be undertaken in Charlottesville, Almarle, NPO. That was it for me. Short meeting.
Thank you. Mr. L. Hendrick, please.
I've, I attended a couple, I have to take that off because the condensation keeps me from reading anything. Attended two meetings over the last month. The first one was the Board of Architectural Review in May on the 17th. We had a very light meeting, only two certificates of appropriateness came to us, and they were both approved. The Tree Commission met last week, June 7. Dan Frisbee, who is the city's Water Resources Specialist, he reported on the restoration project of Shank's Stream in McIntyre Park. This project is going to happen to stop the ongoing severe erosion and improve the habitat along the stream. It's in the area, northeast area of McIntyre Park where the Botanical Garden is planned in that area. It's currently, the project is designed and it's currently being bid, and they hope to begin construction this fall and be completed in about a year. And then, our three standing committees, which are Education Advocacy Arbor Committee and the Codes and Practices Committee. Each of those shared their work priorities for the upcoming year. Highlights including, include the tree planting plan, updating tree data, participation in zoning ordinance rewrite, and taking a more active role in city staff review of development plans to increase and protect trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, please.
Well, I attended a meeting on your behalf, Commissioner Soli Yates. It was the TJPDC Commission Meeting on June 2. So, the actions taken, just to highlight and forgive me because I'm not up to speed on all these things, but they voted in officers and then approved smart scale applications. But I note that none of them, I think, affected Charlottesville. And there was also a vote on contract negotiation related to rural broadband access. Then, some interesting things out of the Executive Director's Report. The Regional Housing Partnership is hosting a summit and TJPD staff in December, Housing Summit, staff applied for and was awarded a $15,000 housing event sponsorship from Virginia Housing to support the summit. Staff will be working to secure an additional $35,000 in sponsorships, donations, and contributions to hold the event. And then also USDA released a notice seeking applications for housing preservation grants. But, it's not going to, essentially, there's a planned, because of the short time period, there's a planned meeting with TJPDC on June 23 for a brief presentation and a resolution of support, I think basically to proceed with applying towards this grant. That would be due July 11, 2022. So, if you're interested in that, that, June 23 is when that meeting will be. And then finally, and from a transportation update, the Commonwealth Draft Budget was released and includes funding for a regional transit government study, as well as funding for the Almarle Transit Expansion Demo Grant. That draft budget will go before the, okay, so it's a draft budget, it'll go before the Board in the June meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Stolzenberg, please.
Thanks. I did have one meeting this month of MPO Technical Committee. We recommended approvals of the Policy Committee of the Unified Planning Work Program that Commissioner Habba mentioned. And we, we recommended approval and endorsed eight smart scale applications from MPO, which include, in addition to the TJPDC ones that are outside of our area, the MPO ones are Avon Street Multimodal, which goes well into the city, District Avenue Roundabout up by Stonefield, Fish Street Extended Multimodal, which is kind of the area around Fish Street Station, and then the Rivanna River Bridge that we've discussed at length. In addition to that, we recommended all the projects the localities are submitting. There's a number in Almarle County, obviously, the one in the city that we discussed last month that will perhaps not be happening on Fish Street, and then all the TJPDC ones for outside of the MPO area. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do we have a Mr. Palmer?
We do, yeah. Hi. Sorry, I'm not there in person, but I am here in spirit. Some childcare snafus prevent me from being there. I don't have too much. We just got through three weeks of graduation and two weeks of reunion, so, over the course of the last three weeks, so that's, that's great. Now, all is quiet on grounds other than all the construction. Big, big things going on are obviously the Ivy Corridor Development. If you're over that way, you can see the big Stormwater Pond Facility that's, that's being constructed, that's been dug, and you start to see how that's coming together, as well as the steel is coming out of the ground for the Data Science School. And just up the road, the Contemplative Commons is getting underway as well. Amongst other things going on around grounds, those are the highlights. There, just, some of you will be a part of it tomorrow, but there is a Master Planning Council meeting tomorrow afternoon. So, we'll be reviewing where we're at with our grounds plan update. So, that'll be a good, a good meeting to be having tomorrow. So, that's about all I have. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. On my behalf, thanks to Ms. Russell for covering me at TJPDC, that was essential. I've been focusing on changing state code, allowing a single stair residential up to six stories in the state of Virginia statewide, which has been unbelievably time-consuming, just a remarkable effort. That has exited Subcommittee with a recommendation of non-consensus, which means some people like it and some people don't, which is not a shock. That goes to the full committee where it may live or die. We will see. I will try to make it live. The big idea is to allow the kind of missing middle residential that our comprehensive plan calls for, but is not allowed by state code. At this time, I would like to hear from Neighborhood Development Services, please.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Excited to be here this evening, in particular because, as you may have seen in your email, we are finally able to announce the release of our first report under the zoning rewrite project. So, this is the Diagnostic and Approach Report, which we will be releasing on Thursday. And as we announced today, we have scheduled our public open house for that report for Monday, June 27, just over here at the Ting Pavilion. We will be validating parking for those who are coming for the meeting. And we look forward to a lot of conversations with the community, with all of you, and whoever else chooses to show up at that meeting. For context, as you guys all know, the zoning rewrite is the third step in our Seaville Plans Together Project, which began with the Affordable Housing Plan that was adopted in March of 2021, the Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in November of 2021, and now the zoning rewrite, which of course is intended to implement both of those projects. This first report kicks off our three-step process for the zoning rewrite. This report is, as I've referred to it before, kind of the conceptual plan of the new zoning ordinance. It lays out the ideas. It talks about what we need to do to change our zoning ordinance in order to advance implementation of the Comprehensive Plan and the Affordable Housing Plan. And then lays those out essentially conceptually for discussion, for feedback from the community. So, I'll be this summer doing my roadshow, meeting with neighborhood organizations and other groups to share the content of that report and get feedback. And then we'll be coming back to you in September in a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council to formally present the final draft of this report and get your feedback and ultimately get your go-ahead to move forward into drafting the zoning ordinance. We'll produce a first draft of that zoning ordinance, restart the process of feedback and engagement around that, and then take all of that input and turn it into a final draft, which will then come back again to the Planning Commission and City Council for adoption. We anticipate those activities happening in the spring of 2023. Does anyone have any questions for me?
So, the writing of the actual ordinance, that's happening when?
So, we are going to start some of the formatting work this summer, but the bulk of the actual drafting of the ordinance will begin after that meeting in September.
Yeah. And one of the things Mr. Fries mentioned at LUPAC was that the actual ordinance itself is going to be more readable to people like I, me, and maybe even you, can read it. So, we're too cool about that.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's one of, I mean, there's many great objectives in here, but I think one of them is moving towards a more readable, more readily understandable zoning ordinance so that the average resident can pick it up, understand what they can do with their property, or perhaps more importantly, understand what can happen at the end of their street or in their neighborhood or somewhere else in the city more clearly. So...
So, just to point out for planning commissioners and for staff, you'll have two new planning commissioners in September at that meeting. They'll be brand new. So, hopefully, they'll be selected before then and have the opportunity to be able to read and catch up with the background and, I didn't read this, the draft or the, I'm sorry, participate in this meeting.
That, timing-wise, that should work out. Council on last Monday was to determine their interview schedule for how they were going to interview candidates for the Planning Commission. I don't know the outcome of that discussion, but I know that they, they realize that we have potential for a number of new people, so...
Good. Glad it's being planned.
Thank you. Other questions about zoning?
Do we have a sense of how that process will evolve after that initial feedback session in September? Is it going to be an iterative process of drafts being written and coming back to us for comment? Or is it going to be more of an interactive writing at meetings, that sort of thing?
I think we're working to finalize how that exactly will go, but we're talking about there being three, that the draft will come in three chunks essentially for review. And I can't remember exactly what those are, but there's, there's three, basically, there'll be three pieces of the zoning ordinance that are released sequentially to begin that review and dialogue and, and process.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Part of that is, it's zoning, a zoning ordinance is kind of one of those things that each piece kind of interrelates to a certain extent. So, one of the things you always have to watch out for in these things is you release a piece and everyone goes, "Well, that's fine as long as this is okay," right? And so, you got to kind of release some logical chunks that kind of interact and work well together so that people can see the big picture of what's being presented.
Okay. That makes sense. Thanks.
Any additional questions on zoning? It's a big one. Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to hear matters from the public, not on the agenda, which, and we have quite a lot on the agenda, but anything else you'd like to speak on, you're most welcome. And Loughlin Hills is also, you can talk about as well if you wish.
All right. So, for those in our public audience in person, we'll have the opportunity for someone to speak first, and then we will go to our list of attendees of resume, and we will alternate as appropriate until everyone has the opportunity to speak. Those of our participants on Zoom, if you are interested in speaking on matters from the public, please raise your hand in the electronic format. If you're joining us by phone, I don't see any phone folks, but if, if they were to be joining us by phone, then they would hit star nine, which would raise their hand. So, raise your hand, and I will check with our in-person audience to see if anyone is interested in speaking during Matters from the Public. Okay, we don't have anyone physically present who's interested in speaking, so we'll move to our participants online. And at this time, we do not have any hands raised.
Hearing none, I closed this part of the agenda. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to consider the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion on that item?
I would move to approve both items in the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I do have one question about the preliminary site plan. I did not see anywhere in there where the 34-12 affordable housing units were addressed. Do we expect that typically at the preliminary site plan part, or the final site plan, or did I just miss it?
We usually anticipate at the final site plan prior to approval that the applicant will state which avenue they are taking. But those elements can actually be finalized all the way up to a building permit, partly because the sizing of the building may change as a part of the building permit process.
Gotcha. Thanks.
I'd like to hear a vote on the consent agenda item.
Yes.
All right. I see the consent agenda passes unanimously. I also, yes? Seven minutes until the joint hearing, unless you have other items. It's just a seven-minute break. To the commission regarding Lachlan, how do we want to handle this?
Well, that was the report, and I thought it was, but I suppose it was not part of the packet for some odd reason.
Was it?
Was it in the packet?
No.
No.
That didn't happen.
It was just the cost development.
Oh, is that what they?
Makes a lot more sense with the report.
Yeah, so, yeah, as I was browsing through the folder, I was like, wait a minute. Where's the memo? And so, in all the, yeah, the 30 documents I sent you, that was the one that got missed. So hopefully that just, it doesn't change that item. Just hopefully it gives you a little more context.
Thank you, that does help.
And the questions in particular, those were the ones, that's just what I wanted you to get. So if you read nothing, just the questions for consideration, that would be perfect.
Thank you, that helps. Seeing 601, I would like to start this joint hearing of the Planning Commission and the Charlottesville City Council. Echo? Am I doing okay? Is this me? I don't know, I'm here, Echo. Little feedback. Counsel, are we in order?
There are three of us here. We've got a quorum.
Thank you very much. Struggling, too many documents. I believe we are moving to 1,000 Monticello. Mr. Haleska, can you take us away?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Brian Haleska, Principal Planner for Neighborhood Development Services. This is a special use permit for property located at 1,000 Monticello Road. This previously, there was a similar application considered in the early months of 2021. So this should look very familiar for those of you that were on the commission at that time. The request is for additional residential density at the site. The current property is already, has been previously developed, and is at a density that exceeds the by right density permitted in the neighborhood commercial corridor. So any additional residential units on the site will require a special use permit. The request in this case is for, let's see, 42 dwelling units per acre, which is above the 21 dwelling units per acre by right that's allowed under that zoning district. The property currently has two entrances, one off of Monticello Road and one off of Bainbridge Street. The applicant proposes to utilize the entrance off of Monticello Road as the building site and build a three-and-a-half-story to four-story building on that site that contains a total of 11 residential units and a small commercial unit on the ground floor. The applicant has proposed two conditions, and I know they may want to chat about that because there, I know they had some modifications to that, which is perfectly fine to do at this meeting. The one condition that you will probably focus your discussion on is condition two, which stipulates that seven of the 11 units will be affordable per the definition spelled out in that condition. And so that is a condition that you should have seen before on some other applications. This project does not trip the standard in Section 3412 of our zoning ordinance, the requirement for affordable housing. So this condition is offered by the applicant above and beyond what is required under our code, which is nothing because the site is so large that, in terms of area, that it does not hit 1.0 FAR, Florida area ratio, for those of you playing at home. Staff has reviewed this in, in both the previous case and in this case, is recommending approval, given the additional housing it provides in an area that is typically very walkable. And so with that, I'll answer any questions you may have. The applicant is present and does have a presentation.
Mr. Mitchell, do you have any questions for staff?
The, would you remind us, the height is by right?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
And we talked a little bit earlier about the, we talked a little bit earlier about the totality of, the impact to the totality of future developments in that area, thinking about the 130 units that are going to be, may be bought on by Belmond condo, the additional 11 units, and just the general stress, traffic stressors on this. Do you have any thoughts about that, and do you counsel, how do you counsel us to think about that?
The, you know, the overall impact on public infrastructure is something that is considered in each special use permit. We do encourage people to kind of isolate the various impacts of each development. But overall, it's something that the traffic engineering staff monitors, and certainly at times the cumulative impact of that. The city's kind of assuming that at some point, you know, assuming the responsibility to monitor those roads and make changes as necessary. In chatting with the traffic engineer about this particular site and this particular road, if you've gone through there, you recognize there's a lot of on-street parking. And so certainly, if there's a safety issue because of the volume of traffic, the first inclination would be to potentially remove some of that parking. Now, that would go through a public process. That's usually a very unpopular change to make. So there's a balancing of priorities in that situation as well. So that's what I would say, you know, the traffic impact of an additional 11 units in this area will be fairly small. But the road itself already is kind of, it's a narrow road. It has some traffic issues now. Particularly, I know we received some complaints about sightlines, and that's one of those safety concerns where you would potentially have to, you know, move around some no-parking signs to create better sightlines.
Because I guess I'm not particularly worried about this one site. I'm worried about the cumulative effect of this. The 130 units, I think, is going to be a by-right development, is it not? So that traffic is on the way, but, okay.
Did you have anything else?
I think that's it for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Bob, please.
Can you just walk us through, what is, I know there are a few minor changes from the last application. That could be a question for the applicant, too, but if you had any thoughts on that.
I think the previous application, when it came before you, there was a lot of wordsmithing around the affordability provided as a part of this application. So the condition in front of you is one that's been vetted several times. It's been presented to the commission before. So there should be a little, I guess, less uncertainty around what the applicant is actually proposing. I believe there's probably been a little bit of changes to the design of the building, but I would certainly welcome the applicant to talk about that in greater detail. Thank you.
Mr. Lehendre?
No questions from Mr. Haleska.
Ms. Russell?
No questions.
Mr. Sulzenberg?
Yeah, and on that note, I just want to commend staff for the improvement in the wording of the affordable housing. It's come a long way since the first time, this one came around the first time. And so there is one other difference, though, right? Last time, we had only five affordably, at least the second time last time, we had five units at, essentially the five units at 65% AMI and FMRs today. And so the two at 125% FMRs and 80% AMI are new, right?
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
And Mr. Palmer?
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe it's been very clear. Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kelsey Schlein. I'm a planner with Shimp Engineering. I'm joined here tonight with Kevin Schaefer, an architect with Design Develop. We are here tonight representing this application and this property owner, Piedmont Realty Holdings III. We do have a few slides prepared. If we could just get those pulled up for you. All right, thank you so much. Great, so, next slide. So just looking at a site overview here, you can see the buildings in the darker gray. Those are the existing buildings on the .1-acre property that is located at the intersection of Monticello Road and Bainbridge Street. The proposed new building footprint, which will house 11 units and a small commercial tenant space, is proposed directly adjacent to the front existing building, fronting along Monticello Road. And so you can see in the lighter footprint, that is the kind of extents of the proposed new building in this location. As Brian said, there is an existing entrance in this location, so that will be closed with this building footprint location. And we'll, we'll talk about this in a few later slides, but just how closing the entrance will limit conflicts points for pedestrian connectivity along Monticello Road. Turn it over, next slide.
Thanks, Kelsey, for that introduction. My name is Kevin Schaefer with the Charlottesville branch of Design Develop. We're a local architecture firm, partnering with a local engineering firm and representing a local developer and owner. Really excited to be in front of you to present this project today. I know there are questions on what has changed, and so hopefully this slide helps answer those revisions. There's three that are notable. The first being the addition of a first-floor commercial space on the ground level that faces Monticello Road. The intention is to create a mixed-use building that helps extend that downtown Belmont commercial corridor, just a little bit further up Monticello Road. The second revision that can be seen in this slide is the addition of 550 square feet of rentable square footage on the fourth floor. We're still affording a very generous step back on that fourth floor and a rooftop terrace on that, on that fourth floor, so that the building will be presented as a three-story mass from the street, which it was previously designed as in the 2020 submission. But you can see, the building has become a little bit more uniform on that fourth floor. The final revision is, as staff has already mentioned, the affordable housing component, adding more affordable units. And Kelsey will talk about that more in the presentation in a few slides. Next slide. So what's changed? Why resubmit this project? It's a, it's a great question. We heard it asked in the pre-meeting, and there's a number of reasons. There's been a lot of discussion and a lot of change in the past 18 months regarding Charlottesville land use and future planning. We've had enhanced community engagement. We've had enhanced public comment through this development of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan. And so many of these specific objectives and outlined ideals that the Comprehensive 2021 Plan starts to codify, this project embodies. And so we felt with the adoption of this 2021 Comprehensive Plan, now is the time to bring this back. Additionally, in the past two years, we haven't solved our housing crisis. We haven't, particularly from an affordable housing perspective. So what does that compel us to do? That compels us to bring forth a project that has an affordable housing component, and even more so than previously submitted. We have an ongoing global climate crisis, and we heard from the city of Charlottesville citizens that they're very in tune with that. And so that compels us to look for sites that reduce the reliance on an automobile that, as stated in our Comprehensive Plan, develop infill sites, gray, existing gray field. This is an existing parking lot drive access aisle that we can turn into 11 units, six of which, seven of which would be affordable. So we heard that from the community, and we heard that codified in the Comprehensive Plan. We heard also a desire for mixed-use development. Mixed-use, mixed-income developments are successful, especially in these neighborhood corridors. So that compels us to include and revise, to include the small ground-level commercial space. And it is small, but there is the idea of creating a storefront along Monticello Road that has merit, that has value. Kelsey, anything to add to that?
Sure, yeah, so, I mean, it's been touched on that one of the main components that has changed is the affordable housing commitment, and really getting that codified, cleaned up, getting, ensuring that it's enforceable, can be, you know, evaluated by city staff in the future. That was a huge step, and we certainly want to thank the city attorney's office for all the work that they did with us on previous applications to get that right. And so, and I think I bring that up just because the, as Kevin mentioned, what has changed? We now have a new Comprehensive Plan in place. We have a new affordable housing plan in place. And the purpose of the land use section of the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Plan states, "Land use policies shape where housing is located, what housing looks like, and how much housing is built." These tools should serve to support affordability without additional demands on local funding. This is a 100% developer-subsidized affordable housing commitment. This is not a request for local funds. And so I think that in looking at these goals and plans that we have put forth over the past 18 months, I think, you know, more so now than 18 months ago, this project makes sense in this location. So this proposal has many consistencies with the recently adopted Comprehensive Plan. Since you all worked on this extensively, I hope this doesn't serve as a recitation of everything that you already know, but rather an emphasis on how this project embodies the goals and objectives of that Comprehensive Plan. So next slide, please. So specifically, just looking at a land use subjective, support the redevelopment of underutilized gray field sites along community corridors. Monticello Road is a main community corridor throughout Belmont and connects a lot of nodes in that neighborhood. So by removing existing impervious area that's serving as an entrance to the site, you know, we're not compromising on existing green space or, you know, developing a green field site. This is a perfect opportunity to realize additional density in this location. It's in close proximity to an existing bus stop on Bainbridge. That's about as close as it gets to a bus stop and access to transit opportunities. Next slide. And so, looking at these, these additional kind of land use goals, within a five-minute walk, there are eight bus stops of this site. That is huge. That does not exist, I'm not sure, anywhere else in the city. So there's plenty of access to alternate opportunities for transportation, promoting housing and redevelopment and infill development that supports bicycle and pedestrian-oriented infrastructure improvements and robust public transportation, and this project is very much directly consistent with that.
I'll just add on this slide with, if you expand to a half-mile radius, which is a 10-mile walk, you can get to three parks, the Downtown Mall and the Transit Center, which will take you anywhere in the city of Charlottesville. Next slide, please. We also, you know, we look towards the Comprehensive Plan for guidance when it comes to the built form of the city. And specifically, the Comprehensive Plan says, "Scale to allow additional housing types and a mix of uses throughout the city at a scale that is familiar to the city's neighborhoods." And I think that's a very interesting distinction and one that we, you know, continue to take to heart. The footprint that you see here on this slide shows a building footprint that has square footage of 1750 approximately. At the street level, we're presenting a building that is 18 feet wide by 32 feet tall approximately, which is not out of scale with its adjacent single-family residences. The four-story is perhaps unusual in downtown Belmont, but the three-story that's being presented at a street level does have precedent within Belmont, including churches, the school, the adjacent elementary school. And then what's on this side is the Virginia Center for the Blind. So we do want to be in harmony with our, with our neighborhood. We want to be at a scale that isn't out of, out of mass, too massive or inappropriate. And I think these diagrams here illustrate how we aim to do that, while adding density and adding additional housing types. Next slide, please. Land use goal six states encouraging creative, context-sensitive contemporary planning and design. And I want to focus on context-sensitive because that is something that the Planning Commission helped guide us with in the previous submission. We do take a lot of cues from our adjacent neighborhood. We've got a two-story brick base, a two-story brick mass that fronts the street, which is very typical in downtown Belmont, and it's also immediately adjacent to us in the existing townhomes. We're using that brick water table, the two-story brick water table height, to mark the eve line of the adjacent townhomes. We've got punched openings that are in proportion of this style of construction and this building type. And then, as the project gets to three and four stories, we're employing a more contemporary style of style of, of a wood material, more contemporary openings, and that is not atypical in, in downtown Belmont either, whether that's through a covered porch or a rear addition to employ a contemporary style that distinguishes itself from maybe a two-story brick masonry mass. Next slide, please.
So the, the kind of comprehensive traffic look, question has, has come up in, in evaluating this project. So this project, 11 units, we're looking about an additional five to six vehicular trips in the AM peak and the PM peak hours. So very, very minimal from this project in particular. I understand that doesn't address the comprehensive approach, but what I will say is, you know, when we're looking at places and sites that are ideal for residential development and ideal for minimizing transportation impacts, when you have a site that's within walking distance of eight bus stops, that's, that's a really good start. And I, I mean, this is, as Kevin mentioned, very walkable to downtown. It's, it's in a very walkable and bikeable location as well. And so, you know, there will be overall, you know, more development in, in Belmont, more, more trips on, on the road, but I think that here, there's a great opportunity for multimodal transportation in particular. I will say by closing this entrance, so we're reducing conflict points per pedestrians, that's huge. We've, we're having now a, a sidewalk connection that is unbroken by curb cuts, and so that's important as far as just the capacity of Monticello Road and how it functions today. The, the parking on the street, when you kind of come down Monticello Road, you have parking on the street. This is kind of the first, one of the first larger building masses that's very close to the street. You have trees framing the street. It creates this sense of enclosure. It signals to the driver to slow down. You know, I, I would say you do have to negotiate in this area with other drivers. I'm not sure that that's a bad thing in this location. And just the, I, I think that's kind of all that I wanted to say for, for transportation, and so turn it back over to Kevin.
Okay, next slide. As I mentioned, Kelsey and I are both local residents, Charlottesville residents. I run past this all the time. As a concerned citizen, rather than an applicant or an architect, I would want to know what's happening to the existing residents. And so this, and a condition that you consider when you're considering an SUP is the displacement of existing residents or businesses. This proposal does not displace any resident, and the existing buildings are to remain. No work is proposed on those existing buildings. And in fact, we're doing, we're taking great care to push the construction development to the north side of the parcel, occupying a very small spot of the parking area to ensure that construction would be as minimally impactful to the existing residents as possible. So overarching goal here of this slide is to say, we would not displace any residents. All residents would be remaining. No work is to be proposed on the existing buildings. Next slide. Conversation point at the last proposal was the visual viewshed impact from downtown Belmont. This rendering, I guess, maybe a little hard to see, the, the three-story mass is down there at the end adjacent to the existing townhomes. As you can see, it is shielded by existing trees that are closer to downtown Belmont in between this and the proposal, and it is not particularly massive, doesn't cast long shadows, doesn't tower over adjacent neighbors. We have the luxury of having a large buffer on site to the east and to the south, and then we have Monticello Road to the west, which, and then we employ the, the generous step back, like I mentioned, to really present only a three-story mass, which then has a change in material after that two-story height to continue to visually minimize that height. Next slide, please. Here are a few more photo montages of, of the proposed building and how it relates to its existing context. Like I said, we are taking cues from our context as a guiding principle. We want to be in harmony with the neighborhood. We want to, which is another consideration when considering a special use permit, ensuring that a building is not overly massive or out of scale with its neighborhood. Next slide, please.
Okay, so on to the, to the voluntary, voluntarily proposed affordable housing condition. So the commitment is for five units at HUD FMR rents, and the income cap for that is at 65% AMI, and then for two units to be capped at 125% FMR. We took this directly from the Office of Community Solutions feedback, just to show what the rental rates are for those units. The two units at 125% FMR will be capped at 80% of, of AMI. I know that in the, the staff report from Community Solutions, it seemed that there was a bit of concern about, you know, perhaps meeting the, the city's goals. And I will say, as applicants, I mean, everyone is looking to, to the, to the policymakers for, for how to structure those things and what exactly those goals are. There are some very specific goals for, in, in the Affordable Housing Plan for, for publicly-funded and, and subsidized units and to how to utilize those funds and that, you know, you, we really want to target 30% for this developer-subsidized commitment. This is the commitment that can, can be made for this particular project, just knowing, you know, the climate of things, knowing that this is incredibly important. This is also a very unique situation on this property where this owner can even offer something at this, given the outrageous construction costs over the past 18 months and given the land costs, just because of, of the fact that it's, it's reutilizing a portion of the site that, you know, wasn't, wasn't previously anticipated to, to be utilized. So that, this is a very unique situation on this property where this owner can make this specific commitment. And then just as far as, I, I know that there was a few calculations in this, in the Office of Community Solutions staff report that I, I think we're kind of getting at expressing a concern that maybe the income limits that were put forth, or, or that the rents that were put forth were out of reach for the income limits that were committed to. And I think that that comes from because the calculation that was done in the staff report was done at 25% of income of somebody making 80% AMI or 25% of income of somebody making 65% AMI. And the standard and how, and, and the reason that was done, it says, is to account for a 5% income allowance for utilities. And, but in our commitment, we have committed to fair market rents, and the definition of fair market rents is a gross rent. That is a 30% rent calculation. And so I just wanted to clarify that, you know, we feel that the income restrictions that were put forth, that these income limits are attainable for those income thresholds, and especially if somebody has a voucher that can help to subsidize that rent because our, you know, understanding of it and in putting forth a commitment to fair market rent, we're doing our calculations based off of a 30% total, not a 25% total. And so I just wanted to call out that discrepancy between some calculations that I saw in the staff report and, and how we had defined this commitment. I will just say that, you know, the two conditions, conditions three and four that were put forth about tracking and a marketing plan, those, those are outlined in a covenants that would be recorded kind of along with this affordable housing condition to ensure that, that, you know, all, all of those kind of more finer details were worked out with the city in the future. And so we're, you know, totally on board with, with committing to those conditions three and four and definitely can make that happen. I'm happy to speak more about affordable housing if, if there's further questions, and I'll turn it back to Kevin to see if there's anything else you wanted to add.
Yeah, I'll just end on a few points. One just being voluntary commitment. I think staff had noted this doesn't require any affordable housing, and the owner has directed us to be very aggressive in our affordable housing allowance or however you want to put it. But there's, that is a voluntarily decided to, to make this an affordable housing project, and it is unique in that the owner owns the land already. And, and I think as we see land costs rise in the city of Charlottesville and construction costs rise in the city of Charlottesville, this kind of small-to-mid-level scaled infill housing project has the possibility to make real change. And so there's a precedent on the table here that I urge you to consider the merits of this application and, and more in that the precedent that it sets. Please do not discourage this kind of project for coming in, in front of you. One thing I, I would just add is that in, after the zoning rewrite, we could see this become a, a buy-ride kind of project, depending on how the comprehensive plan is outlined. So from a density and housing perspective, it's only 11 units, but it is, it has impactful change if implemented in other parts of the city in terms of this infill, mixed-use, mixed-income housing project on a grayfield, existing parking lot. So I think with that, I'll say, next slide, and that would just end us with, with questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to start with council, if I may. Apologies for short-circuiting you last time. It's not intended. Mr. Payne, do you have questions for staff or council?
I guess a couple of questions for staff related to the Office of Community Solutions comments on the application, as I'd just be hear, curious to hear more from staff about specifically concerns about the rental affordability periods, as well as assurances that vouchers would be able to be accepted.
Yeah, good evening, councilors and commissioners. This is Alex from Office of Community Solutions. Councilor Payne, your, your point is worth taking. A couple of concerns that we have, even though this is a voluntary commitment on, on the part of the developer, it's the 10-year affordability period. Think a 30-year affordability period would be more in line with city policy, and then also the lack of mention of their willingness to accept vouchers, you know? So that's why we raise those concerns, you know? Right now, 10 years, inasmuch as it looks very generous with the voluntary commitment, we feel that a 30-year commitment would be much, much contributing in terms of housing affordability in the city. So that was why we raised those couple of concerns.
And what would assurances that vouchers would be accepted look like in practice?
I think it would depend on the, it would depend on the developer, their willingness, you know, to work with staff and the housing authority, you know, to set that price level, you know, at the point where folks with vouchers would be able to, to use it in those units.
And final question for, is it just questions for staff right now?
Either of these five, please.
Final question for staff. When you talk about an acceptable marketing plan on how to market the designated affordable units, would that look like in practice, some sort of, sort of like you'd mentioned, some sort of communication or collaboration with CRHA and their long waitlist of people with vouchers to even have them, the individuals on that waitlist even know that this property could potentially accept their voucher?
That's correct. We usually, the, we usually require, as noted in the staff reports, that the developer provide an acceptable marketing plan. And part of that marketing plan is how those that are in need are informed, and that would be through the collaboration with the CRHA and perhaps other housing agencies and staff, you know? And once the units are ready, you know, and the city is notified, and then the marketing plan is approved, then we start working with the developer to disseminate the availability of those units. So a CRHA is usually in the equation in terms of the marketing plan to make sure that those that are on the waiting list with vouchers, you know, have the opportunity to inquire about those units.
Thank you, and just a couple more questions for the, the applicant. Is that okay? Does, did, as the applicant, did you have any thoughts on the feedback in the report from the Office of Community Solutions about the plan on how to market the designated affordable housing units and whether vouchers will be accepted in the development?
Sure, and thank you for the questions and the opportunity to respond, and sorry for the awkward angle as I try to talk into the microphone and also address you. So as far as the voucher acceptance, it was, in, in putting forth this condition, it was our full intent to ensure that voucher was accepted. And, and honestly, I, I fully thought that we had put that in our condition. And it is in somewhat of a convoluted way, but the way in Section D of the proposed condition, it references the, the covenants. We did submit, and although the draft covenants are not part of the condition, we did submit draft covenants for review, and those are to be reviewed and approved by the city. In the draft covenants, the draft covenants references the city's standard operating procedure adopted by 3412G. That provides for the provision for the acceptance of vouchers. So in providing our condition, although it's not explicitly stated within the condition, we're happy to clarify that, but through a series of document connections, they are required because they are required by the standard operating procedure, which is referenced in the covenants. And then as far as the marketing plan, that is also an item that is kind of more so laid out within the draft covenants. I think we're, you know, every, you know, recommendation that Mr. Ekofuna just put forth as far as like working with CRHA, ensuring that they know that units are available, you know, totally on, on board with that. It was never the intent to omit any of that information, so sorry for the, you know, obscurity in, in that front.
Just a couple more questions out of curiosity, you know, of the existing units there, do you know how many are currently occupied?
Um, at the moment, I believe they're all occupied.
And do you know how many of those tenants were people who'd been living there before ownership changed?
Uh, it's six, and so there are six units currently occupied before the ownership change. What, it's, it's a little, so there was a previous owner, but there was an owner, there was a long-time owner, then there was a short-term owner, and now, you know, we have, we have this third owner in place who's been in place since 2018. During the short-term owner, that was in between the current owner and the long-term owner, the previous owner, I believe 11 of the units had already gone to a rental rate that was somewhat more of a market rate. So out of the 23 units, 11 units had already gone to market rate with the prior, with the immediate prior owner. So when this owner acquired it, there were 12, I guess, units that were still renting at below, well below market rate, and of those, there are six tenants who remain in the units and rent at well below market rates.
Did all the tenants there have the choice to renew their lease?
Um, I do, I believe most everyone was. If anyone wasn't, it had to do, you know, from my understanding of it, just with, you know, a, a, a ability to uphold the terms of the lease.
And of this, the six tenants who remained, do you know if any of them use housing vouchers?
I'm uncertain about that.
Okay. Well, I guess those are all the questions I had. I would just note, for the record, I do think it's important that, well, it's true, the damage, I guess, has been done, and this is a development on a vacant parcel, at least for the moment. I think it's at least worth to have on the record that, you know, the development changing, the ownership changing has resulted, even with this, a net loss in affordable housing, and the comment of this development will not displace anyone, while technically true, is true because that displacement already occurred. And I think that's just worth noting for the record in the history of the specific project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pinkston, questions for staff? Thank you. Mr. Pinkston, questions for staff? Questions for the applicant?
Yes. I guess the only real question I have is, so I guess two things. So the main point for the SUP is the dwelling units per acre? Is that the main thing you're?
That is the, that is the only request.
That's the only thing. Okay. And then the other piece was, in terms of these affordable units or the fair market rate, the things that you outlined, would that only be in the new piece or spread throughout the whole development?
It's only applicable to the, the new building.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Snook, questions for staff? Questions for the applicant, please.
Yeah. The first question I had is, the commercial addition seems kind of random. How did that come about? Why?
I think we heard from the comprehensive plan, and also just from the public hearing of that, the idea that mixed-use, mixed-income buildings with a variety of housing types are desirable. The, the mixed-use component of it affords a small commercial space on, that fronts a community corridor, a neighborhood corridor, and that affords a storefront for a small business.
I mean, you know, to a certain extent, the, it almost feel, and I will say this as someone who voted for this project first time around, so it's not entirely a critical comment, but it sort of seems like you were throwing in the commercial there in the hopes of finding one more little nugget that someone might latch on to. Or perhaps another way to look at it is, if we add in that additional element that will enable us to pay a few more bills, now we can afford to throw, to throw in another affordable unit or something like that. And if, if, if the latter were, were true, it at least to me suggests a continuity of thought that is, that is greater than, than what it, I'd say, I don't mind that it's got a storefront capability there. It just, like, it just seems sort of random.
Yeah. I, I think I can speak to, there were two trains of thoughts. One being that we were at our max density with 11 units, so it couldn't become another residential unit, really. And then, so that was then becoming an amenity space that was only going to service the, the units, the new units. It seemed better to, on the neighborhood corridor, to give that to the street and create a storefront. And the, the second train of thought there was exactly as you mentioned. If, if we can have a commercial storefront here, can we then commit to more affordable housing? That is also kind of represented in the additional 550 square feet on the fourth floor, is if the, that leasable square footage is gained, can we then go more aggressive with our affordable housing component?
It, it is rare that we learn, that we on council, learn enough about the way that a developer sort of figures out, okay, what am I trading off against what to get to this result? And it doesn't offend me that there is some trading off going on. So I'm, if there are additional trade-offs that have to get made, and this is one of those trade-offs that has to get made in order to be able to afford more affordability, I'm, I'm all in favor of that. Like I say, I voted for the project first time around, so.
Sure. And just to add just one item to that, to the commercial space, I mean, I recall an earlier kind of design conversation where I know you all were reworking the building, you know, in, in the middle of COVID. And, you know, we were kind of talking about commercial spaces and that, a small coworking space, or, you know, even just a small, you know, coffee bar or something where you walk in, those are kind of the only opportunities for, for, you know, social interaction when we were kind of in that mindset as well. So I think just adding, I think you brought up the great point of opening it up to the community, and that was kind of the, the main, a big design driver behind that.
There, there was discussion in the first draft, or first, I'm not sure which, in one of the penultimate drafts, anyway, of the future land use map, of having more sort of mixed-use nodes. And there was a lot of objection from people who said, well, gee, that might be a great idea in New York City, but it's not a great idea in my neighborhood. Belmont already has that to a certain extent with the, you know, the, the plunking down of the various restaurants just a block, a block and a half away from here. And it just sort of has always seemed to me that, that that might be kind of an example of how a mixed-use node might be seen to work. And so the idea intrigues me, frankly. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, questions for the applicant, please?
Question about the vouchers. If we do the vouchers, and I think we're going to find a way to make that a condition, but if we do the vouchers, will the vouchers be available to all seven units? Available applicable to all seven units?
Yes, because they were limited, the 125 FMR is, I believe, currently the rate that vouchers cover that are issued by CRHA. So
Just the city-funded vouchers.
Just, just, yes. Thank you. I, I need to clarify.
So, so, so an acceptable condition would be that Section 8 vouchers will be applicable, acceptable, accepted by all seven affordable units?
Yes, yes. Yeah. I mean, if, if, if someone comes forward with, with a voucher, you know, the, the intent is to accept it. So.
Thank you.
So just, Mr. Chairman, I just, if you don't mind, I just have a question for the applicant.
Briefly, please.
Is that okay?
Briefly.
Yeah. But the voucher, are you saying that since the city voucher, it's up to 125% that you guys are inclined to accept the voucher at 125%?
I'm not sure. We, so we are, the, the reason that we set the thresholds that we did for the rent was specifically to enable the acceptance of vouchers and to ensure that the rent was not offered at a price that was unobtainable for somebody with a voucher. So that was the whole intent, thought process in setting the thresholds that were set.
I'm looking at you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Abab, please.
Thank you for the presentation. I think it's a good proposal to, that adds some infill housing in a very desirable part of our city. The only, I guess, question I had was, I heard some concerns from the public about the, the term of affordability, the 10 years. Can you talk about why 10 years and where that came from?
Sure. I mean, the, the 10 years is what can be voluntary committed to in this, in this particular situation. You know, I know, I know the city is, is, you know, seeking much longer affordability, is seeking 30 years, seeking 99-year, you know, affordability terms. I, I think that, you know, whenever an applicant is coming before you, and I think this is pretty clear in the affordable housing plan, kind of like accepting city funds, that that should be the expectation, just as if, when an applicant utilizes Lytech funding. You know, they have to meet certain thresholds, they have to offer affordability for a certain period of time. And so when an applicant utilizes city funds, there should be, you know, a, a standard by which they adhere to. In this case, 10 years is what we can commit to on this project.
Thanks. Mr. Hendra?
What's the square footage of the commercial component?
It's 385 square feet.
And what practically do you see being able to, to use that commercially?
Yeah. As Kelsey mentioned, and as we've, we've mentioned, it, it's a small space. Is it a, is it a coworking space? Is it a small coffee shop? Is it maybe a little bakery? Those kinds of items, potentially a, a laundromat if, and I'm not entirely sure that would be in zoning, but those kinds of items where it's a small use.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
Well, sorry to follow up on that. Help me understand, is it, is it just one story, just the first floor of that space? Seems like, from the slides you showed us, a previous plan had more, more broken-up massing on that, on that, I guess, west facade. It seems like, you know, the, the, the building we're looking at now is just sort of, you know, kind of a monolith. And I'm wondering if you had extra space, you know, could, would it be possible to kind of get that broken-up massing more? Or was that, you know, was that considered? You sort of maxed out the residential part and then have this little orphan of a commercial storefront, but I'm not sure that's serving the, the, you know, mitigating impact to the neighborhood from a visual standpoint? It's kind of a, I don't know if that's a question. I'm, I'm a little confused by the, the viability and the usefulness of that commercial part.
Can you speak to that?
I think, again, it was just to get a storefront on the street that faced Monticello that was otherwise being used only as an amenity space for the residents. It does, it, it's, the front tower element is then, is separated by the open-air exterior egress stairs. And so, not that it's landlocked, but there is kind of bounding boxes within that front tower element that is directly below studio apartments. And so we're working kind of with that footprint. And also, you know, trying to create a unified cohesive thoughtful design.
That's all my questions.
Please. Mr. Stolzberg?
Thanks. Let's see. I was also going to ask you about possible commercial uses. I think that's kind of been covered. I mean, it seems to me 380 square feet is larger than you'd think. It's like quite a bit larger than, say, Wu Noodles or Lucha. Could fit a small restaurant, but even an office, I think, would activate the street a little bit. Let me talk about vouchers. You guys are not our legal counsel, but is it, isn't it the case that source of income discrimination, which means discriminating against voucher holders, is illegal by state code?
As, as you said, I'm not, we're not your legal counsel, but I would, you know, agree with that statement.
And then, it seems to me in your, in your, or these conditions we're imposing, we again say, source of income discrimination would not, along with all kinds of other discrimination, would not be permitted. It's condition number four, I think, as part of the marketing plan, non, how to market the property, including non-discrimination of prospective tenants on the basis of race, creed, religion, color, sex, actually says sec, age, national origin, or source of income. And I, I mean, I, I think that is also in our general standard operating procedures. But do you have a sense of how that marketing plan might do that? Would you kind of give CRHA a heads up that you are listing the units? Obviously, you have to submit the marketing plan to OCS. I guess maybe the implication is that OCS would then tell CRHA that these units are available? Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Great. Okay. And then I did have one small question about traffic. There's slight discrepancy, maybe. I think the application says something about, there's five trips in the AMP hour generated and six in the PMP hour. And in the staff report somewhere, it says, I think it's 12 trips. Is that because the staff report is talking about the total number of units, whereas the application is kind of in the text, is talking about the incremental number? Do you happen to know that by chance?
No, I, I don't know the answer. I don't know if Brian can speak to that. I, I'm wondering, it's, it's probably closer to either the whole housing development or that some perhaps more, you know, the commercial user was driving a certain number of trips as well. Whereas, you know, if it's, if it, that, that's going to vary based on who finally, you know, who occupies that space. If, if it's, if it's a Lucci-style lunch spot, well then it's going to contribute no trips in the peak hour if it's only open from 11 to 2. And so that's, I imagine it's either coming from an analysis of a prospective commercial tenant.
Yep. That makes sense. In any case, that seems like a pretty small number of trips, one every five minutes. Also, laundromat is not a permitted use in NCC, by the way.
As I was saying it, I was regretting saying.
All right. I think that is all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Palmer, do you have questions on this one?
No, I don't have any questions, but just listening. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no questions on this one. This is very familiar to me. But I would say I, I am excited about the addition of the commercial use. I think that's, makes a lot of sense for this space. At this time, I would like to hear from the public. Can we please?
Sure. All right. So we'll, we'll follow similar procedure to what we've done during matters from the public earlier today. We will first ask if we have anyone in our audi, our in-person audience who is interested in providing any comment on this. And then we will move to our virtual audience, and we will alternate as appropriate as we move forward. If you're in our virtual audience at this point in time, you are asked to raise your hand in the virtual world. Again, we don't have anyone on the phone, but if you were on the phone and needed to raise your hand, you would hit star nine to do so. So we'll start with our in-person audience. Do we have any interested speakers? Anyone interested in speaking to this item? Okay. We don't have anyone in our in-person audience. I'll note that we have one person in our virtual audience. And I will unmute Brandon Collins, who is our first speaker.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name's Brandon Collins. I'm a lifelong resident of Charlottesville. I've raised children here. And I want to make clear, I'm speaking only for myself this evening. I am concerned about this community, and I'm concerned about this affordable housing crisis. And as it stands, I'm going to ask you to deny the special use permit for this property. A special use permit is going outside of your existing rules. The property already is outside of your existing rules. And in order to do so, the, you have to show that there's a benefit to the community and that there's not a negative impact on the community. And I think it's really crass to hear the development team talk about their commitment to affordable housing and the affordable housing crisis when this exact property has contributed to the crisis in Charlottesville when it comes to affordability and to the displacement of low-income residents, some with disabilities and some who are seniors. And I think, based on that, there's already a negative impact. They've, they're already beyond the rules of the zoning. They're already above their density. We've got 23 existing units currently way overpriced, two-bedroom going for almost $1,700 a month. Add 11 to that, then the property itself has 34. And they're proposing seven somewhat affordable units for a 10-year time period. I don't think that that is the kind of benefit to mitigate the impact that the owners have had on the affordable housing situation in this community. And I think you need a better deal. I think even with a better deal, it's a pretty, pretty big stretch to get to a point where these community partners can be seen as operating in good faith. Thank you.
And thank you. Do we have anyone else?
We do not have anyone else. Is there anyone else in our virtual audience who would like to speak to this issue? Okay. We don't have any other speakers. I do, though, want to note that we received a comment from our legal counsel concerning the, some of the discussion that took place before. Rob Hubbard is our, is our counselor this evening. He noted that the source of funds or source of income became a protected class in the Virginia Fair Housing Law on July 1, 2020. It is unlawful to discriminate because of any It is unlawful to discriminate because of any source that lawfully provides funds to or on benefit of a renter or buyer of housing, including assistance, benefit, or subsidy program, whether such program is administered by a government or non-governmental entity. So that's a little assistance on, on that, and we also received from another audience member very similar feedback on, on the rules there.
Thank you. I'd like to move to Commissioner discussion on this item. I would like to note, I had a call from Alma Mills of Belmont, longtime resident. She expressed a variety of concerns on a variety of topics, also a concern about aesthetics and traffic safety on this item. Mr. Mitchell?
So, I recognize Brandon's concern, and I definitely recognize the concern expressed by Michael. Brandon is talking about historical wrongs, and Michael has recognized in his comments the, the historical missteps. But that was then, this is now, and I think this is an opportunity to improve the situation. So I am likely to support this with, with the conditions outlined by the, by, by its staff. And would be interested in seeing if any other commissioners want to add something to, a condition to beef up the voucher piece as well.
Mr. Bob?
As I said before, I do think it's a good infill proposal. I do like the commercial. I think something creative could happen there. Kind of extends that downtown Belmont feeling. And I appreciate the material change for the massing. The height is not something that is part of this application. It's a by right height anyways. But I wonder if, I guess this is a question to everybody, is that something we can add to the SCP conditions, the, the design that was in the application to lock them into it, or is that something we can't do?
That sounds like a question for staff. Mr. Hleska, can you speak to that?
Commissioner, we have, in the past, written conditions that essentially said that the development would adhere to the submission packet. So I think in this situation, you could say that the, something along those lines of it would be substantially in conformance with what was presented to the planning commission. The one counsel I would give is add the date of the packet and the, the date of the drawing, just so it can be easily identified in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Bob, did you have any additional thoughts? Thank you. Mr. Lahendra, please.
Nothing at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell?
I don't have any comments.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Yeah, I'm of the opinion that this is a good project. Certainly, if you look at it in a vacuum, ignoring the site, it is possibly the best project you can imagine. It's replacing a driveway, a redundant driveway and curb cut with 11 units of housing, and seven of them are going to be affordable. I think it's hard to argue against that. I think the commercial aspect is a, is a nice little addition. Whatever goes in there, I think will probably activate the street, make it more pleasant to walk along. I think the elephant in the room is the thing that we are legally not supposed to consider in, in talking about this application, which is the history of this property. And, you know, I think we spent a long time last time going over exactly what that history was and trying to assign blame, and assuming that the information we received from the applicant then was correct. They did make a compelling case that the majority of the wrongs were done by the previous owner. That's not to say that Mr. Holsworth is a saint. I think the question for counsel, as you consider this, if, if you are still considering denying this, denying, you know, five homes for people under 65% AMI or deeper, another two for people under 80% AMI, and then another four at market rate. If we're denying those homes as punishment to the property owner, when does that punishment end? You know, is it enough to have a year and a half delay to say that they couldn't build when construction costs were cheaper and couldn't, and had to sit on the property in the meantime? Should we be denying those homes forever as punishment? I don't know. I think our legal counsel would say, you're not allowed to consider that at all, and you cannot punish them. But of course, we can just say, oh, well, I don't like, you know, the massing or the impacts of the density. Though again, the massing is by right. In fact, they could build it four stories without any setback by right if they just stuck in commercial, which I think would be worse for the city. So in terms of the actual direct impacts, adverse impacts of the density, I think, realistically speaking, there is none. And if you layer on top the affordable housing we're getting out of it, it's a big win, and I, I hope it can move past that baggage.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, did you want to share some thoughts on this topic?
No, I don't have anything thoughts, really. It seems like a good project for, for that location. But that, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I don't think that we can redeem or make right what has been done in the past. I don't think that's an option on the table. I think that this project has to stand alone for good or for bad, and my, my personal sense it is, is, in this condition, is for the good. Mr. Payne, would you like to share thoughts on this?
Just a thought on, it came up a little bit in the length of affordability period. I'm not saying it's possible in every project or even necessarily this project, but if we're talking about length of affordability being really critical for making a longer-term dent, I wonder if we have to reach a point in terms of the expectations of developers and what's in a proffer, basically some kind of partnership with a community land trust for affordability. I know that Alamooral County has sort of been moving a little bit, or at least had discussions in that direction. And just because it came up tonight, I wonder about that. And second thought is, I think the point about source of income discrimination now being illegal in Virginia is very important, and it moves the conversation to really the more important point of are developments de facto accepting individuals with vouchers, even if they're not turning away someone strictly on the basis that they're using a voucher? Because we obviously have an extremely long waitlist that is not finding properties to rent in either Charlottesville or in many cases, Alamooral County. So figuring out what is de facto creating that situation is worth figure out, figuring out and mitigating. And final thought, as others have said, you know, I know it's not a condition of what's accepted, but for the historical record, I mean, the change in ownership has resulted in a net loss of affordable housing, and it perhaps is not going to be on the table. But I think you've seen in developments like Sunrise, where a nonprofit developer has purchased it, allowed people who were displaced, would have been displaced to stay. That's not on the table right now, probably, but it's worth keeping in mind as we're thinking about development as an iterative process, where expectations may influence actors' behaviors.
Well, but, thank you. Mr. Pinkston, could you share thoughts on this?
No comments.
Thank you. Mayor Snook, do you have thoughts on this?
There has been some question or some comment made about the, the period of affordability, and I, at the risk of sounding like I'm trying to do somebody's detailed financial analysis on the fly, I will note that depending on the, on the discount rate used in trying to make that calculation, I mean, if, if the discount rate, for example, was as low as 5%, the difference between a 10-year and a 30-year affordability period is significant. If you're looking at 8%, it's obviously less. If you're looking at a 10% discount rate, it's, I'm not going to say it's very little, but it ain't much. And I don't know what the internal rate of return is that these developers are working with, and I don't know any way that we would ever know that. But I do know that there's not a lot of difference between a 10-year and a 30-year affordability period for most, for most analyses.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Please, state that motion.
All right. I move to recommend the approval of application SP-22-0005 with the conditions listed by staff, the four conditions listed by staff on staff report page 13 and 14. And I'm open to appoint the amendment.
You can word it for me. Okay. My need to help word in this, that the massing and design substantially conform to the presented images on application.
It works.
Whatever the application number is.
Yeah, that's good.
Did you want to put the date on that?
April 12.
April 12.
Do I hear a second on this motion?
Second.
Discussion on this item, please.
So one of my hesitations is the fact that while the project does comply with by right heights and, well, heights and massing, still, we are asked to comment upon the massing and scale of the project. And, and to my mind, this is not, is not a compatible project with its context, with the buildings next door, with its relationship to the street, and, and I find it unfortunate in its design.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item?
Did you have any stronger feelings towards the design presented previously, the one that Commissioner Habab, I think, just referenced?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So I thi, I think what Commissioner Habab was, were you not, what was the amendment that you suggested?
That it was to comply with what's.
With what was presented today?
Today.
Okay.
And that's the one I object to.
I understand.
Strictly speaking, I think without that, without the condition, they could build it to the by right massing regardless, right?
Yeah, that was the, I think, the intended.
Personally, I don't really think we should be afraid of a four-story building, particularly with the setback on the third floor, especially with such a small footprint. Personally, I wouldn't mind really so much if there was no setback. Personally, I'd choose different materials that would fit more in the Belmont character, but I guess they painted the brick gray next door, so the gray brick sort of matches. But, you know, I think what we're seeing in the by rights of middle for the Belmont condominiums, just a block or so north of here, on a much larger site, are buildings that are taller with much larger footprints. In previous by rights of middles there, we've seen, you know, large apartment buildings that are four stories. And, you know, this is a nice little missing middle, small apartment, and I think it, it fits in great. I mean, again, I don't love the materials, but I'm not an architect, and nobody likes my aesthetic opinions, anyway.
Which just, just discounted your entire opinion.
I think we may be ready to vote. Ms. Creasy, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Lahendra?
No.
Mr. Habab?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Soliates?
Aye.
I believe that passes. How are we feeling? Do we do a short break, or are we good to move forward?
Oh, we got a long way to go.
We do, indeed. Let's continue forward. 923 Harris Street. Mr. Hleska, can you please take us there?
Members of the commission, this is a special use permit for, at a property located at 923 Harris Street. Make sure I get that right, because I always mix up my Harris's, Harris Street, yes. There's an existing structure on the property. It is a single-family house that has been vacant for some time. The property is zoned industrial corridor. The request before you is for additional residential density up to 62 units per acre. The reason this did not come before you is because we had the wrong number for, I guess, for the density. Staff has reviewed the application. Really, the only issue that's arisen in the discussion was just the access to this and the parking. The applicant's build-out would have a requirement of eight parking spaces for the residential units plus a small art studio space on the ground floor. The, they are utilizing reductions in the code to get down to seven units required, but then are requesting a waiver of one of those spaces. So they would provide six units on, six spaces on site, and you would be redu, being asked to reduce that down. As staff has noted in the staff report, there is on-street parking on Concord, which is one lot to the south of the site. Harris Street does have, in this area, does have bike lanes, and this would, as a part of the build-out, they would extend a, an existing sidewalk that is on the adjacent property. To answer Commissioner Mitchell's question from the pre-meeting, the site, when you look at it, there is an alley, a platted alley, between the doggy daycare or the pet daycare and this site. It's about 20 feet wide, and then the rest of the grassy area that you see there is contained within this site. So this will be, as a part of the build-out of this, you will have a, a building that's a little wider than that existing structure. I think that's all we have, and so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and Representative the applicant is present and does have a presentation.
Mr. Mitchell, do you have questions for staff? Mr. Bob?
No questions.
Mr. Lahendra?
What is that alley for?
Right now, it's grass. In many cases around the city, just, you know, from an informational standpoint, there are lots of alleys like this that were platted at once, once upon a time with possibly some interest of preserving access or providing access to the rear of properties in some cases, and was, were never used in that manner. So that's there.
I was just wondering if it was intended or it represented historic access to something that is gone now, or, okay.
Yeah.
Or not, not the residence that's behind this property.
No, and, yeah, you, you did ask a question about that, and so if you look at the, our city's GIS mapping, you'll notice that the, the small engine repair facility to the, to the north of the project, that building is actually pretty much on its sideline, on the side lot lines. It has almost no side yard.
Okay.
And so that parking area that you traverse to get back there, that's actually the right-of-way for Cynthia Avenue. And the house behind it is addressed off of Cynthia. It's not very formalized, and I'm guessing it's probably not a publicly-accepted street, given its condition, but it is a public right-of-way.
Yeah, especially with the customers or people that are parking there.
That's, yeah.
Ms. Russell, please.
No, I have no questions.
Since the subject of the day, do we know the square footage of the commercial area?
I would defer to the applicant on that one.
Fair enough. Mr. Palmer, do you have questions on this one?
No questions right now. I did have to convince myself by looking on Google Maps that there wasn't actually a house there. It is one of those lost lots on Harris Street that I had never realized was there.
I want some pie.
Me, too. I'd have no questions, thank you very much. Mr. Payne, do you have questions for staff?
Yeah, maybe I missed it, but clarify, what is the property that is behind 923 Harris Street? It's like 604?
It's like 604 Cynthia. It is a single-family residence, although the tax assessor's records have the use code as multifamily, so I'm not entirely sure what that discrepancy is, but I believe it's a single-family house. I'm familiar with it just because it was an adjacent property to the, the pet care facility, which has gone through at least two special use permits in my time.
Has there been any analysis at all of how, if at all, this development would impact access to that property, as well as just like any other impacts it could have on that existing residence?
No impacts to the access of the property. That property has, could avail itself of the alley, should it want, should they want to. I don't believe the, you know, an alley closure would go through a separate process. So if the, if this applicant wishes to close that alley and obtain that space, they would have to get the. to get the sign-off of that applicant, of the, the owner of six oh-four Cynthia. They also have frontage along the Cynthia right-of-way as well.
No other questions this time. Thank you. Mr. Pinkston, questions for staff?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Snuff, please.
I have long been concerned, and I was concerned when we approved the project that's up at the end of Harris Street, that we are taking land that is zoned industrial or commercial and putting it into a residential use at a time when I think the long-term economic health of the city requires us to have some non-residential uses. And one of the concerns that I have is that to plunk down an apartment, an apartment building into the middle of what could ten years from now be a very productive industrial or commercial use of some sort, is, is likely to be something, it's likely to be something that gets in the way. And I wonder whether it is wise for us to be creating things that are likely to get in the way of what I suspect some years down the road is going to be a very, a very different kind of development. So, I don't know whether anybody at the Planning Commission level has thought about that or is concerned about that. Counsel certainly hasn't talked about it as a whole, although I've, I've kind of mused about it from time to time. But if we are being asked to, to give an unusual, which frankly, a special use permit should be a somewhat unusual use, although these days virtually all of them end up getting approved, if we're being asked for that unusual permission, when perhaps we think that maybe some years down the road, we're going to regret having done so, I just, I, I wonder whether that's a good idea, whether we ought to be going in that direction. And my question, I guess, would be whether the staff, or this commission, or anybody else here, has thought about that concern. Am I alone in it?
You are not alone. The Office of Economic Development has raised this before the commission in the past. One of the particular problems that the city has, at least in the development of businesses, and is not a shortage of incubator space, but of the next iteration of space, one thousand or two thousand square feet of kind of open space that could be configured however a business needs, once they've moved out of an incubator space. So, that has been raised. You know, a couple legal points regarding zoning, this is the industrial corridor. The industrial corridor permits residential by right at twenty-one dwelling units per acre. So, the request before you is an increase in density, and it's not for a use that isn't permitted in the zone by right. So, that's one element to talk about. And another one is, and I think this is probably a larger discussion citywide, is how many of those industrial uses that we've traditionally sequestered into our industrial corridors are, can now be suitably sprinkled throughout the city. And in many of these cases, what we're, what we consider to be industrial, kind of in our old Euclidean zoning ideas were relatively dirty uses for, you know, pollution, noise, and a lot of that. Most of those uses don't, don't go in cities anymore, and won't anymore. So, what we're really talking about are, you know, laboratory uses and things like that, that can conceivably coexist with residential uses and be in a lot more of our corridors than just River Road, Harris Street, and allied in that area. So, yeah, it is a, it's a larger discussion. My rationale on this one was more along the lines of, this is a fairly small property aerial-wise, and so having a hard time imagining this being, you know, a, a key part of industrial development in the future. But it is a point that is, that has been raised before and consideration as we move forward in the zoning rewrite.
Well, I mean, I, I agree that it's a small site, that by itself isn't likely to be used for a manufacturing facility or a commercial facility of any significance. However, if anything on the northwest side of, of Harris, I mean, those are all a bunch of little small lots. And maybe we say, well, okay, maybe what we really mean is the southeast side of Harris should be industrial, but we're not going to worry terribly about the northwest side because those are all small lots, and it's, it's not that far a distance to the railroad tracks anyway. I mean, I, I just think, I, I would like for us as a city, for you all as a staff, for this body as a commission, for council, to do that intentionally and not accidentally. That's my thought.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to hear from the public on this item, I'm sorry, from the applicant.
The applicant.
The applicant. Very good. You had me in deep thought on industrial meetings, this is good.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kelsey Schlein. I'm a planner with Chimp Engineering, here representing nine-twenty-three Harris Street LLC, the property owner and applicant. Here with me tonight, virtually, is the, the property owner and project architect, Carmel Greer. And so, I'm going to do a brief introduction to the project. I have a few slides prepared for you this evening, and then I'll turn it over to her to speak a bit more about the project and maybe touch a little more in depth on the, the commercial space, the size, and what's imagined in this building here. And also on the call, Justin Chimp, the project engineer, is available as well. If I could get my slides, that would be awesome. But I guess while the slides are being pulled up, and the fourth slide that I have might be the best to speak to this, just because it's an aerial image, but, you know, I'll just kind of start with the alley questions, since that's what's, what has come up so far. So, the, the alley adjacent to the property was actually closed, I believe, in 2014. And the, so, you know, when an alley closure takes place, as Brian said, that, that, that's a public process, and so that, you know, all took place. And when the fifteen-foot-wide alley closure was, was closed, half the alley goes to the adjacent property owners on one side, seven and a half feet, half of the alley goes to the adjacent property owners on the other side, so this subject property. Immediately after that alley closure was done, the property owner who owns what is Pampered Pets acquired the seven and a half feet adjacent to this property. So, there is no alley adjacent to the property. That is, that is not how the residents behind this property access their unit, that is entirely owned by what is currently occupied as Pampered Pets on, on the property. And so, their property boundary, there's no alley separating this property and Pampered Pets, that's a shared property boundary, and then at the, I'm sorry, Pampered Pets, excuse me, Pet Paradise. Helpful to have my label in front of me. And in, in the, the kind of rear of, of the site, too, there's also a fairly wide railroad right-of-way as well, that there, that they have a lease agreement that they're working, that they're occupying in that space back there. So, just to explain, like, the, the property context and the ownership and what exactly is going on immediately around the site, the alley was closed a few years ago. So, thank you so much for pulling up the slides. So, the, the property here, nine-two-three Harris Street, so this is a property that is less than five thousand square feet, located on Harris Street, right next to Pet Paradise, just a few hundred feet away from the intersection of Concord Avenue and Harris Street. Harris Street, I think, has long been imagined in the previous comprehensive plan, in this comprehensive plan as well, as a business technology hub corridor. And I think Brian spoke really well to this, is, as we have, you know, incubator spaces and then kind of the next space up from that, you know, maybe some type of labs or biotech users come online, and we kind of imagine what industrial uses look like, you know, in our next phase as, as a city and in our next phase of land use. Residential uses can coexist very well with those type of uses, and a lot, you know, they will most likely be employees and, and maybe want to live close to, to their place of work. So, Harris Street is very much an access that has been anchored by development at McIntyre Plaza and development over the last few years on, on Preston Avenue. And so, I think, although this has been a long imagined vision for what this road could be, I think now that those two anchor points on each end of this access have kind of start to develop, or, you know, have, have redeveloped, I should say, to, to have much more commercial and residential activity over the past number of years, I, I think we'll kind of start to see some more development proposals come forward on, on Harris Street. So, next map, please, or next slide. So, you can just see, so the property is zoned industrial corridor. And to, you know, speak to Counselor Nook's point, just about the kind of economic development considerations that, that come, come into play when a, a development proposal is, is before you for something that you might not think of characteristically industrial. So, as Brian mentioned, residential is a by right use. This request is specifically for a special use permit for increased density to permit seven units on the site. This is, I think, all, all the points in my mind that I had to make were, have already been made. This is an incredibly small site, less than five thousand square feet. It is not ideal for some type of more comprehensive redevelopment, and, you know, additionally, I think that most of what we would, I would say typically imagine as industrial uses have taken place on the other side of the street, like where, you know, the, the concrete operation and, and those lots, the larger lots, the depth of them just kind of lend itself better to those type of uses. Next slide, please. So, you can see here, just in the context of the recently adopted future land use mapped, it's designated business and technology mixed use, which calls for light industrial and production uses with other commercial and residential uses where appropriate. We think this site is incredibly appropriate for residential use. It's been used as residential since nineteen twenty as a single-family dwelling, and, you know, we think this is an opportunity for, for this property to serve seven households in the future and moving forward. Next slide. So, just to state context, and this is just a little more, this is the slide that I was just hoping to speak to about the alley. So, you can see GIS still shows the alley is open, that's probably causing some of the confusion. And so, just explaining that it's, it is that property boundary between Pet Paradise and the property, the subject property, that alley has been closed. Next slide. Just looking at the site context here, there is an existing single-family residential dwelling that, that dwelling has been vacant for some time, and I'll ask Carmel to speak to this if, later on, if she has some more info related to that, but from my understanding of it, the, the property was under one family's ownership for a period of time. The individual who lived there had since passed, the property went into an estate, and that is how the, the, the property was acquired by the current owner. So, it has been vacant for a, a good bit of time, and just moving forward, we really see an opportunity for how this can continue to serve, you know, future residents in, in this area on this particular property. Next slide. So, looking at the, the concept plan here, so the, the building footprint, since it's a small site, five thousand square feet is occupying a majority of the site, of course, but we do have a fairly generous setback off of the rear, just to offer a little bit of relief off of the property that currently has an existing single-family dwelling on it, but behind the property. I will say the structure that is on that property is much closer to being behind the Gingrich Building rather than directly behind our building. So, it's more so of our rear yard is kind of aligning with their rear yard in this proposal. So, there's just one point of ingress and egress here from, from Harris Street. The parking will be underneath the building. The proposal is for parking on the first floor with three stories above. And then, just an additional proposal, as Brian mentioned, the, the code offers a parking reduction in the code itself for providing bicycle parking. So, just conceptually showing how that all would lay out on, on the site. Next slide. So, there is, there, there are transit opportunities somewhat nearby in this area, and I think that just as, you know, more residential development comes online, and, you know, there's more of a need for transit in this area, I'm sure that additional bus stops will come online in the future, but this is just kind of, just showing the existing transit infrastructure in the area and how residents could access tran, nearby transit stops. Next slide. There is relatively good bike infrastructure. The, the Harris Street Bike Lane Project accommodated bike lanes and, and climbing lanes, especially on the hillier portions of Harris Street to allow, you know, bikers to, to safely maneuver up and down that corridor. So, there is a bike lane in front of the, the property here because we're on a hill, and that's one of the climbing lanes that was implemented. So, and, and in adding this, this development here, there won't be any compromise to that existing bike lane. And this is just also calling out the nearby amenities to, to the site, being Greenway, which is fairly close, and then Washington Park and Jackson Peabody Middle School amenities there. Next slide. The additional project details, the city code, section thirty-four, one sixty-two, does permit applicants to request parking modifications to requirements in the ordinance. And so, with, when applicants are making a special use permit request, and so with this special use permit request, we are requesting to reduce the parking requirement by one space, just given the available on-street parking on Concord nearby, we feel that that's validated, and just also given the nature of, of the relationship between the residential and a potential commercial tenant, where there could be kind of complementary users there, where residents and the commercial tenant are somewhat sharing spaces, where for, you know, resident is not using the space during the day, the commercial tenant is, and then when the commercial tenant isn't using it at night, the residential tenant is. So, we do feel that the, the six spaces provided with this, just given the context available on-street parking, that we can meet the parking demand with this project. Next slide. I think that's all, if it's, we're getting the loading thing, that, that is all that I have for you for my presentation, so I will ask Carmel if you would like to say, just speak to this project and perhaps talk, speak a little more, because there was a specific question about the commercial square footage and imagined tenants in that space. Oh, it looks like, you're muted, Carmel.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no worries. Thank you.
Hi, so my name is Carmel Greer, and I think, I believe Kelsey covered most of the salient points. I just want to, and with regard to the alley questions, the, the alley was closed and sold to Pet Paradise prior to us being involved. So, unfortunately, I would love for that alley to be open, but it's not, and it's owned by somebody else. So, I think that with regard to the industrial corridor question, the, you know, as, I moved here recently from, from Washington DC, and, you know, I was really struck, I absolutely love and adore McIntyre Plaza, and particularly Circa and the bread shop down there, and, you know, it, it does feel very disconnected from the rest of the city. And in my mind, you know, to have a really successful industrial corridor, a, a variety of uses which are part of the, the zoning code would really help facilitate movement from McIntyre corridor, McIntyre Plaza, you know, up to Preston Avenue. And in terms of creating a walkable, vibrant city, I really think that, you know, a, a street like Harris Street as a connector that has, you know, a variety of uses, I think Harris Street is really right now characterized by, characterized by really useful industrial, you know, great things like Southern States, but it's also characterized by a tremendous number of vacant parking lots and lots that are just kind of weeds. And, you know, in the case of this house, you know, a house that it can only house one family, well, actually, it's in a state of disrepair anyway. But, so I think the idea that, that Harris Street could be a really wonderful place to be is actually, would actually help abet the, the city's goals for that corridor. And I, and I also think that the Preston Avenue area is also full of vibrant, fun things to do, and, you know, so the idea of connecting, using Harris Street as a connector, I think is a really wonderful thing that, you know, we would like to do. So, and then I think also, just as an outsider coming in, the, you know, Charlesville's obviously sorely lacking in housing, and, and there are a lot of sites where people really clearly don't want housing to be built, and this is a site where... And this is a site where it's so small, there's no, you can't even fit the core necessary for a lab or something like that on this site. That's just not viable. It's actually very viable as a mini-storage site. I don't really think the city desperately needing more mini-storage. There is demand for that because of the students, but, you know, I think providing housing would be a much more noble endeavor. And, and so, you know, I think that it's rare to find a site where nobody really has a big objection to housing on the site. And so I do think that is an asset that Harris Street has, in that, you know, people are not offended by the notion of additional housing here. And, oh, in terms of, you know, I'm an architect, I would love to create an art space within the building. I think, you know, the size of that space, I think, will somewhat depend on as market conditions change, but we're thinking like a 700-square-foot area. It would be artist studio space.
Thank you. That's all we have for you.
Mr. Mitchell, questions for our applicant? Mr. Habab?
Yeah, I had a question on the planting, the landscaping. Did you consider, are those shade trees on the sidewalk, or are they like medium trees?
We had, I believe, there shouldn't, conceptually, as kind of a medium or even an ornamental in the back, there clearly showed as shade. But as far as, I mean, we're going to comply with the ordinance and what we have to provide along the street frontage.
My other question, I mean, you mentioned, you know, to help make Charlottesville a walkable, bikeable city, it'd be nice to have those improvements on that, on that side. Most of, you know, the sidewalk condition is in the curb cut for the parking. I was wondering if you considered some kind of textured, either stamped concrete or raised sidewalk to reinforce that pedestrian access?
No, we, at this phase, we haven't considered that, but I think that's a, you know, very good consideration. I think the only kind of question, and, you know, we'll work with this out with the city engineer and the traffic engineer at site plan phase, is just whether they would permit some type of like material or, you know, any type of texture variation in the city right-of-way. I don't think that's permitted by the city design standards, since the sidewalk is in the right-of-way itself, and the pedestrian connectivities are all provided in the right-of-way, that any type of kind of crossing over our entrance would be within the right-of-way itself. So I think that's a very good point, and like, point well taken and a great consideration. I just think that would be something, if we were to do a texture finish, that we would need to get approval from the city engineer.
Thank you.
Mr. Lindner?
I'll just point out that the drawings show willow oaks for those trees again on the backyard, but I have no other questions, other questions.
Ms. Russell?
I do have a question. What is it? No, I don't have a question, I have a comment. Never mind.
Thank you. Mr. Solzenberg?
Oh, no, I remember my question.
Please.
Sorry. The commercial space, is it intended to be in the front of, you know, at the, at the street front?
Carmel, can you speak to that?
It would be towards the rear and encompass the rear yard as sculpture garden.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Solzenberg?
Thanks. First, to follow up on Commissioner Habab's good questions, I believe because there is no step, setback requirement here, you're not subject to the street scape, or the street tree section of the code. And so I hope that you do put street trees there, and if possible, at least one large canopy tree. The building next door has a great canopy tree there. It would really help the walking experience along Harris to keep that going. Let's see. My question is mostly about the massing sketch. I see that, you know, it's got a nice-looking, almost old-style facade along Harris, and then it's got that rear step-back, which seems a little bit silly and wasteful of a perfectly good, possibly buildable space. Is that a result of the, of hitting up against that 64 DUA limit, so you have nothing left to put in there?
Yes.
And if so, would you consider perhaps larger units or more commercial space to make that viable to build out?
The units are actually already two bedrooms, so the units are fairly large currently. I think that, I'm not actually opposed to completing that floor currently. I feel ambivalent about it.
Great, yeah. I mean, I suppose maybe the problem would be that you would need, if you added a third bedroom, you would hit up against additional parking requirements.
Yes, the parking requirement is the issue.
But of course, we are, I think, planning on waiving one of those, and I think would probably be open to more. I think, you know, square buildings, particularly when it's a rear setback, it doesn't help with any sort of visual impact or anything else, like we talked about front setbacks, or step-backs. You know, it's, it's less energy efficient, and it's more prone to leaking. It's just better to have a nice, simple box. That's another question.
I concur entirely. I think what happened is, once we provided, if we were to increase, if we were to increase the commercial space, we would increase the parking necessity. If we were to increase the residential size, we would also cause more parking to be required. So I think the parking restrictions are very much the driver of the shape of the building. I think that, you know, if that were something that you all felt great passion about, I think that squaring it off with the anticipation of future parking reductions would certainly be something that I would be open to. You know, frankly, I think that on a site like this, I would envision, you know, when I went to UVA, like, I didn't have a car, and I lived far, far from campus where it was, you know, inexpensive. And, you know, I, the idea that I think every single person that lives here is going to have a car doesn't seem realistic to me, but...
Yep, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say I feel so strongly about it that I'm going to vote it down because it has that step-back, but I mean, I don't know the opinion of the other commissioners or council, but it seems reasonable.
Can I ask a question that I think you'll probably clarify right away? Is it not possible to have more of a street setback to allow for larger street trees and somehow adjust that, that ratio?
That could be possible. Is the front setback really the limiting factor on the street trees in the first place?
And from a site design standpoint, it was also just the kind of relief off the rear setback. And so I think, I mean, from a site consideration, you know, I don't immediately see an issue with kind of shifting things back a little bit, but I'll let, you know, Carmel, of course, speak to the architectural considerations with, you know, shifting the site back or reversing the, the kind of step-back, so it's street-facing.
I think the suggestion is more that by making the building a box, you could, you could reduce the footprint a little bit and add some extra front for setback. occurs to me now, though, that that might reduce the space for parking, which might be an issue.
It does, it does, yeah.
That's the issue.
Fits the six parking spaces very nicely, given the dimensions.
Gotcha. Yep, I'll save the rest about walkability and parking stuff or comments and to wax philosophic about industrial zoning.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, do you have questions for the applicant on this one?
Yeah, I think it was clarified, it sounds like all the parking is under building, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. You know, I have some questions for the, for staff, actually, if I may be irregular. Mr. Hlesky, can you confirm the alley changes?
Not with 100% certainty, because I don't recall, I vaguely recall that alley closure, but it was, I think, handled at that point, it was handled by, was it something that would go straight through the attorney's office? That process has subsequently changed. The reason why it still shows up on the map is because even though you close an alley until you actually move your property line and vacate your old property line, there's no cause for our GIS people to redraw those lines. So that would be the reason why, you know, I spotted it and just said it was there. As I've been thinking about it, the more I'm remembering, yeah, there was a sign posted there saying alley closure, so.
Thank you. Can you clarify the canopy tree issue?
Canopy tree issue, Mr. Solzenberg is absolutely correct that if you are subject to a setback of zero feet, or if you can, if you have a build-to line of zero to 10 feet, you are not required to build, to have street trees. Street trees, per our code, if they are on a plan, you should endeavor to have large canopy trees. And if you are required, that's the requirement. However, we do permit reducing to medium in the case of obstructions overhead or things like that. Certainly, if somebody would like to provide them, there's the availability to do so.
Are there such obstructions in this case?
I don't believe there are any overhead power lines in this situation, but that's not the only consideration. One of the other considerations is obviously soil volume, and whether you have an adequate planting area for that tree to thrive.
Chair, could I jump in?
Please.
Could we add a condition comparable to the one we added for the 1000 Monticello, saying that trees should be provided at least in conformance with what we've seen in the application?
I believe so, sure.
So that would at least get us a little bit of tree before. Not that I don't believe that you guys will add trees.
Thank you for adding some clarity. Mr. Payne, do you have questions for the applicant?
I have no questions at this time.
Mr. Pinkson?
No questions.
And Mayor Snup?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to hear from the public.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, at this point, we have no in-person public remaining, so we will go directly to our virtual audience. And if anyone is interested in speaking to the proposal for 923 Harris, please raise your hand in the virtual application. And again, we don't have any phone folks at this point in time, but if we did, they would hit star nine, and that would raise our hand. Again, any, anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Chair, we don't have any hands raised.
Hearing that, I'd like to close public comment. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to hear our thoughts on this item. Mr. Mitchell, can you start us off?
I'm ready to make a motion, but I think Mr. Solzenberg wanted to wax poetic about industrial uses and things like that, so I'll, I'll let you guys pontificate for a while, then I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Mr. Solzenberg, please, speechify.
Sure, yeah. Actually, first, I wanted to say how much I love Boto's, and this is, well, half a block away from biscuits, and, you know, a quarter mile away from Boto's and a grocery store. So I have no qualms with any amount of parking reduction. And if they were to add more useful floor area, that would trigger additional parking requirements. I would be very happy to allow reductions for those as well. Also, as mentioned, there aren't really any neighbor residences nearby who would complain about on-street parking. There are also probably a lot of parking lots that you could get shared parking at if you didn't want to actually get a reduction. As far as industrial zoning goes, I do think about having industrial zoning. God knows, every time I see Roger Johnson, he will not let me forget about it. But it's interesting, it goes in two ways. I think we need to protect industrial zoning in terms of having places for those blue-collar jobs in our city and in our community. And I think it's a good point that many of those uses are fairly compatible with residential nearby. And, you know, as someone who works at a hardware company, I do very much enjoy taking a rental scooter to go to our factory over near there. And, you know, I think this is a small enough parcel, it's already residential, that I don't see a huge impact on the availability of that potential industrial space, but I think it is something to consider generally. The more interesting thing about the concept of industrial zoning to me here in this area is the flip side of protecting residences from industrial uses, which a lot of people say is the reason for zoning in the first place. And, you know, while this is the IC zone and not the MI zone, and so therefore supposed to be for more of those light industrial uses that are not as noxious, it also happens to be host to the most noxious and heavy industrial use in the entire city right across the street, the concrete plant, spewing out fumes, making loud noises, just not an altogether pleasant place. Maybe there are some benefits of having it in the city. You have concrete trucks not going quite as far on the roads to get places to deliver the concrete. But, you know, I think it really puts the lie to the idea that, that zoning is there to protect residences from these potentially harmful uses with negative externalities. That said, you know, multifamily residential is by right in this zone, and all we're doing is allowing a couple more units. And of course, that use is already there, so to potential renters of this place, caveat emptor, they know it's there, and they know they're going to be across the street from this loud, smelly thing. And if they're willing to do it, to be a half a block away from an ace biscuit, you know, I guess that's their prerogative. I just, I think we should really think about what that means for the nature of zoning itself as we undertake this upcoming zoning rewrite. And what are we protecting who from? Is it, is it protecting people from potentially, potential harms? Or is it protecting people from not having scary apartments that they don't like near them? Which, I will say, the big advantage of Harris Street is that there is no one around to be scared of these apartments. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Habab, did you have a speech prepared?
I don't think I can top that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Lindner?
Well, I don't do speeches very well, like Mr. Solzenberg, but I, I, I mean, I drove up and down this street. I know the street pretty well, because I live in the neighborhood, and I've benefited many times from the concrete plant across the street, which also sells stone and materials and, and, enough said. And I've, to have the power engine repair place, I've used that many times. We need these uses, and we're losing them, and I think it's a question, the, the vision of seeing a Harris Street become a walker-friendly, more pedestrian and family-oriented place, and then suggest putting, building a building that has no street trees and nothing but a, an entry into an apartment building. So I, I'm, and then to have buildings surrounding this one that are also aged, and I could easily see them to be combined. And I think we do need different-sized lots for the kinds of industrial uses that are going on there. So I'm very disappointed with this application.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, did you have thoughts on this?
Well, my, my one thing I'll wax poetically on is that I would support housing over mini-storage any day. And I do understand this is a by right use and an increase in density, so I don't have any major opposition to this application.
Mr. Palmer, did you have thoughts on this item?
Not, not too many. I think I... I think I, I hear what people are saying about losing industrial, kind of this type of, of use on this property if it's developed as residential. One thought I had is, you know, it's interesting, it's got the parking underneath, which is great. In a future where cars are not needed, that could be repurposed, you know, for some sort of, you know, additional space to support whatever the commercial space on the bottom becomes. So, you know, you might have a little bit of flexibility there in the future, but that was my only comment.
Thank you. For me, the, the comment that the parking requirements are driving the design absolutely hurts my brain. Oh, we need to get out of that world. I heard something about a motion.
Oh, I'd love to do that.
Please.
I move to recommend approval of application SP22-00004 with the conditions listed on page 12, the three conditions listed on page 12 of the staff report. And I am open to a friendly amendment from Mr. Stolzenberg if you would like to add one.
Is there such a thing?
Yeah, I would suggest an additional condition requiring, at minimum, the streetscape trees shown in the conceptual landscape plan on sheet six submitted 15 March 2022.
And I accept this friendly amendment.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item.
I know that there's a motion, I'm very sorry. I should have brought this up in my presentation. If I may just say one thing.
Briefly.
Very briefly. Condition two says the height of the building shall be four stories above a floor, a floor of structured parking. If the commission would consider the height of the building may not exceed four stories above a floor of structured parking, instead of the wording shall be.
Why?
Because it is actually a three-story building over structured parking, and so we don't want to commit to a certain height that's actually not a total. I'm very sorry for not bringing that up in the presentation and interjecting in the middle of the motion.
Mr. Elska, can you give us some clarity on this item, issue?
I was aware of the change that Ms. Lein pointed out. I don't think staff has any objection to it.
Thank you, that's helpful. Mr. Mitchell, what are your thoughts?
I am happy with altering, altering condition two as outlined by the applicant.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item, please.
I suppose while we're changing that condition, you know, requiring the structuring, structured parking in the first place, I guess maybe it's since we're only giving a parking reduction of one, now is not the time. If they were to come back for an additional parking reduction, then we could remove that condition at that point if we wanted to potentially get rid of it entirely, which probably not, but does that, that make sense?
Yeah, I would have to go through this. Any changes would go through this process.
Oliver, okay. All right, never mind.
So that's a hypothetical, okay.
Additional discussion on this item? Ms. Chrissy, would you please call the roll?
We need a second on the motion.
We didn't get a, we didn't have a.
I have a second.
Yeah, okay.
I would maybe add, there is, the one last thing we, I guess, didn't really talk about, the affordable housing requirement. The, they, the applicant, of course, has the option under the code to meet it however they would like, but they do already seem to be predisposed to doing it with cash and a loop payment. I would suggest perhaps considering at least the possibility of having one onsite unit to meet that requirement.
As a condition in this?
No, just to the applicant.
It is so suggested. Additional discussion on this motion? Ms. Chrissy, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Lahendra?
No.
Mr. Habab?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And Mr. Soli.
Aye.
I believe that passes. How are we feeling? Do we need a break? Or can we truck forward?
How about five minutes? Because it's gonna.
I'm hearing a five-minute break.
This is gonna.
This is a media one. Five minutes, please.
Oh, please, a short extension. Perfectly reasonable, thank you.
Only if I get to use the plotter.
We have a plotter?
A plotter?
I don't know, I think Robert is on the work.
Big old printer.
I see he'll give you the secret code.
I don't need one, I've got a drafting table.
Roy, they're goldfish.
Ouch.
Interesting.
Now, Roy, if you, whoever, at least now, let's use the plotter, if you could figure out which printer my computer is printing to. But I know I've sent things and it never comes up, then, like, two days later, my mailbox is stuffed like two inches dark.
Usually because the printer's not turned on. And so, once you turn it on, like, it goes through all the queue of all the stuff you sent.
Right, the one out in the hall, don't give me that printer.
Somewhere deep in the police department basement.
The one right outside your door?
You were printing to the one on the other side this morning.
It worked.
Yeah, there was a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, when Robert tells me, I don't know how to fix that, I'm totally, I'm flocking.
No, no, I'm curious.
I do know in grad school, someone sent like a hundred paper, eight and a half by left, into the plotter at the A school. In the middle of twenty foot by thirty six feet.
Three hundred dollars per day.
All right, I'd like to call us back to order, we're seeing a counselor. We have some infrastructure restrictions in this room, please bear with us.
There he is.
I believe we are back in order. I would like to turn our attention to four hundred fifteen Tenth Street Northwest, Mr. Holuska, I believe can take us there.
Yes, me again. Members of the commission, this is a rezoning request for property located at four fifteen Tenth Street Northwest. It's also known as the Old Trinity Episcopal Church. The request is to rezone from the current classification of R1S to B2 with proffers. There is an existing church on the property, the owner is the, also the owner of the Dairy Central and Dairy Market property. They acquired it at the same time as that property. They have done some repairs to the building, but currently, R1S, as it's zoned, R1S is permitted to be used as a house of worship or a residence, and very little else. The so the request from the applicant is to amend to B2 with the restriction that only a certain number of uses would be permitted on the property. So, the expansion of uses would be art gallery, auditorium, private club, music hall, educational facility, technology-based business, and office. All the other uses in the B2 zone would be proffered out. I'll cut right to the chase on this one, this is a historic property, and the, there's a document in your staff report that talks about the history of the property. As it is currently zoned, there is no restriction on the demolition of the structure. Obviously, the applicant has repaired pieces of it, so there are no short-term intention of demolishing the building. And in fact, the applicant's narrative talks about utilizing the building for event space and as such. There's been a number of comments from the public, and including, I think, a letter from the Historic Resources Commission Committee, about the potential for an individually protected property. An individually protected property is a single property that is designated as historic and falls under the purview of the BAR for design review, and the restriction on demolition. Any IPP or BAR, any building that is under their jurisdiction, they must, you must get BAR approval prior to demolition. So, that would be a way to guarantee the preservation of the building, or at least some public process prior to demolition, versus the current process would be just to submit a demolition permit and take the building down. I've communicated this to the applicant, the applicant, the applicant has indicated their willingness to do an IPP. Their only concern, that at least last I heard, was the timing of things. However, an IPP rezoning would have to be noticed. So, they would probably, most likely way to do that would be to amend this application, defer it tonight, amend this application to include IPP designation, re-advertise it for a July public hearing, and then go forward in August. So, that would delay them a little bit, but that would be the way to do it. Another element that Mr. Mitchell mentioned in the pre-meeting, you mentioned the community benefits agreement. For those that are unaware of what that is, it's frequently used in particularly in rezonings and in larger developments, and you may have read about them in news stories around developments, particularly in large cities, where the developer reaches a binding agreement with adjacent neighborhood or residents about aspects of the development that will, in some way, benefit the surrounding neighborhood. It's not something we've used in Charlottesville, I'm not sure exactly, in many cases, those, in those larger cities, those agreements are a necessary step prior to consideration for a development. And they're often something that gets discussed and debated in a public setting. We can obviously not require these things, we cannot request a proffer that would, you know, vest one of these things, so it would be at the discretion of the applicant whether or not they would want to provide that in this matter. But that's just an idea, I know that's come up in public conversation about this project, so hopefully that deals with that. With that, I think I will entertain any questions you have, and there is a representative of the applicant virtual that I believe has a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I think you did really good job answering the questions that I, that I already outlined, so thank you for that. I'll just go ahead and make a statement as opposed to ask a question, that it is my hope that this building, this edifice, can remain undisturbed. I mean, the, the way it looks and feels will not change forever. So, I really do like the, the idea of chatting more about the IPP. But say we can't. There is no legal restriction, even under the new zoning, nothing that prevents them from raising the building and repurposing it based on the new zoning.
Correct.
There is, but they are, they are still bound by the proffers if they raise the building and repurpose it. And if they sell the building and repurpose it, the new owner is still bound by the proffers.
Right, any proffers that are approved as a part of a rezoning ordinance are a part of the land, they go with the land, they don't come with the owner. So, yes, ten transfers down the road, the proffers are still there, the only way to remove the proffers, and this is a question that has come up actually in a completely different development that we're not talking about tonight, is some of these situations where we have proffered conditions on rezonings. If we're pursuing a general rezoning in the future as a part of our zoning map rewrite, that's, that's an issue that will need to be kind of considered at that time. If you do a general rezoning and sweep kind of all the proffers aside in that situation, how do, or how, you know, how do we maintain those in a situation? So, that would be a situation where the proffers would be vacated, lacking an action by city council to kind of do something like that, that's sweeping and across the board. Any modification of the proffers would require the same process that we're going through to establish them, a public hearing, notice, all of those elements.
So, the, the question I was going to ask is, what does it take to, to get this thing designated a historic site? But I think you're suggesting that the IPP is a quicker and better way to do this?
There's only, there's kind of two ways to do it. What we're probably most familiar with, what people are most familiar with because it generates the most amount of headlines, is when a new district is coming into, we're creating a new district, the historic district, there's been a survey, and we've outlined a bounds of an entire area that's going to be designated, obviously, we're, we're sitting in one right now, the downtown historic district. It's our oldest historic district, there's a number of them across the city. But there are also, if you look at our map, single properties that are designated, because the building on them is of note, and we want to preserve those. In this situation, I'd probably defer to Jeff Warner, who is in the room, about the suitability of a, of a Tenth and Page, there is a Tenth and Page historic district, I believe. Oh, no, okay, he's not even shaking, he said no, I, I, there's been surveys in this area, obviously. So, whether this would be part of a district in the future. He's behind me, yeah, I got eyes in the back of my head, no, I'm reacting a lot. There is that, there is kind of the question of, you know, would it be included in a district in the future? What's the timing of that, if it were prioritized by city council? Obviously, the applicant has, at least in conversations with me, expressed a concern about the length of time, because they would like to get this building into use as an event space. And so, yes, the IPP process would be the quickest way of doing that.
And that, and the objective is to preserve the building, and the IPP process will preserve the building.
It preserves the building, well, it creates a, an additional step to demolishing a building. And there's additional body that would have to weigh in on that and approve it. IPP designation also can bring changes to the building to the BAR as well, I believe.
Mr. Bub, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll come to you, sir, Mr. Bub, please?
Just the, I guess the quick follow-up is, so the mechanism to get a property designated as an IPP is to, is that something that the applicant has to start, or is that something that council can enforce, or how does that work?
Ideally, the applicant will come forward, but it is not, it's not a necessity. The city council ultimately retains all, you know, the ability to rezone property. And so, you know, the city council with the recommendation of the planning commission or BAR could entertain a rezoning. But ideally, the applicant and the owner of the property is on board and supportive.
Thanks, Mr. LaHendra?
And as far as you know, we're talking about all three buildings on the site at this point.
It's, it's the entire parcel, yeah.
The parish house and the church.
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell, please.
So, help me understand, you know, it sounds like we all are in favor of that, what, what do, what do we do if, if there is, if the rezoning would be resubmitted, I mean, do we, what are we trying to achieve out of this conversation tonight?
I think the, two points in the, at least in, in my mind, one is obviously the statement that's now coming forward, that the preservation of the building is important. And that possibly that the, the additional uses that are being proposed by the applicant would only be, that this rezoning would only potentially move forward with a recommendation of approval with the planning commission if there is some mechanism by which the building is going to be preserved. That statement is, you know, you haven't explicitly said it, but it's pretty, I think it's implied at this point. The other one is if there are any other concerns with this increase in uses. I know that issue, the IPP issue is paramount, but there, you know, if that were to be dealt with by the applicant, are there other concerns from the commission that you want brought out?
And I think there are, I think there's concerns of seeking, you know, buy-in and endorsement from the, from the neighborhood, you know, from the community, we've heard a lot from neighborhood associations. It sounds like the, the agreement, what is it called, the CBA, doesn't, you know, make a little bit out of our capacity? But is there some middle ground in which, you know, I don't, not even a proffer, but like, I don't know, maybe I'm just raising some, that is an additional concern right now.
So, when you said the ideal situation would be that they come forward to request becoming an IPP, so they, they don't want to do it as part of this application, right? Because they want to get this done in time for wedding season, whenever that is, I think they might be into it already. So, wouldn't they then have to, like, submit a new application and then pay all the fees for a ZMA?
If they were to go that route, they have the option of, you know, obviously, at any point, the applicant can request that, you know, to pause their application and amend it. The main issue with dealing with that tonight is it has not been properly advertised and noticed.
Yeah, so I imagine they don't, like, want that because they want to get it through. So, I, I guess the question is, like, wouldn't they prefer, if they, if they're okay with doing it, wouldn't they prefer if we did an initiation so that they could avoid all that? Or, I mean, is it, maybe they could do like an informal request and say, hey, guys, do an initiation, because then we don't have to pay all these fees for a zoning map amendment, just going to add restrictions to our property? You see what I'm saying here?
I'm not going to speak on their behalf, I will let them speak on their behalf.
Well, yeah, I'd like to understand the mechanics of what you, what you, you're recommending that we consider this application, make a recommendation, but how do we then guarantee that we get them to do the IPP?
Well, so, they don't have to initiate it, right? It's just like our, like, we, it's just like a regular rezoning, like, we could initiate it, or council could initiate it. So, it sounds like, I'm not making any recommendations, but it sounds like their preferred path is that we get this all approved as soon as possible so that they can start having weddings here. And then, that happens, also, they're okay with it being an IPP, I'm sure they're not thrilled with the idea of having to go to BAR for everything, but I would assume that they don't want to, like, submit a whole new rezoning application, pay all the rezoning fees, again, just to get all these restrictions out of their property.
That's a good question, that's a good question to have the applicant address, but I think you can use a site of weddings is what you're interested in, and that's what we do in churches.
The worry, I guess, for us would be like, are they going to potentially demolish the property real quick in between us approving this rezoning and us finishing the IPP designation? Which sounds like, if we trust what they say they want to do, weddings, they don't, they're not going to do that, but.
So, the plan is, is for them to try and work those applications simultaneously. I'm not going to speak for them, but there, there is a concern that's been provided from the community and then other aspects, and I believe that, that they are aware that, that concern is a big concern, and that there is a way to address it, and it appears they are willing to move in that direction, but we will let them speak further to that.
Certainly, Mr. Pinkston, you've been unreasonably patient, please.
I think I figured it out, I'm sorry to be dense, but, so, basically, the, the notion is to let them shift from R1S to B2, but the B2 is limited to only being art galleries, auditorium, houses of worship, and so forth. Okay, sorry.
Right.
I finally got the, the two negatives there and figured it out.
And those are in addition to the current R1 uses, right?
Correct. Correct. Okay.
Mr. Palmer, questions for staff?
I don't have any questions, thanks.
Thank you.
I think it's fairly clear, but my, my concern was process, but I think we've got a sense of that, and I think perhaps it will become more clear shortly.
Mr. Payne, questions for staff?
Yes, now I've lost the page number. But I believe one of the proffered conditions that would still be allowed is a technology-based business, like, what, I'm just curious what falls underneath that? Or maybe that's best to hear from the applicant in terms of what they're intending by that use.
Let me make sure that we don't, if we may very well have a definition of it, we may not.
Would you try to have definitions for things?
I know.
Do you guys want me to?
Well, I, maybe I'll wait for the, I'm more, I'm, I'm more interested to see what the applicant's intended uses.
Mary Snuff, please.
Is there a statutory definition?
Yeah, do you guys want me to read it?
Yeah.
Please. Technology-based business refers to a business such as computer component assembly, computer software development testing, financial service company, graphic design firm, research lab or other research facility, and similar businesses, where the use has no more than a minimal adverse environmental impact, including noise, odor, light, glare, traffic, or vibration, when measured at the nearest property line, and all operations, including storage, are housed completely within an enclosed building.
Are housed.
That type of there.
Futuristic.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
In terms of staff questions, could we hear from Mr. Warner as to the process for an IPP?
Please, Mr. Warner, can you tell us the story?
I've got lots of stories.
My kids would go, Dad, not one of those stories. I, you know, a couple of things, first off, I'm Jeff Warner, Preservation and Design Staff. I am staff for the Board of Architecture Review, so while I have a second, we could, we have an open for an architect and a historian, historic preservationist, and I know one of you will be taking Jody's seat in September, so, to the BAR, see me. One question I can, I can answer is, Dairy Market is already an IPP, so, so Stody Point's very familiar with the process, they've worked with us on all the things that went on there, so, I mean, I'm not, again, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I know Chris is familiar with, with the process. I live in an IPP, and I'm convinced a lot of them were just old buildings that the city, back in the eighties and nineties, just didn't want to fall over. But I think, I want to make sure you all understand that there's the state and national designation, and then there's the local designation. One does not require the other. We did do the survey of the Tenth and Page neighborhood, there was a recommendation for a National Register historic district, so it is eligible for that listing. That would then take that next step of, of formal nomination, and that's, that's a big step to take. But there's also, if, if there was ever a consideration of a local district, but I can say nothing from our work there kind of has led us to pursue that. Similarly, with Rose Hill neighborhood, which was surveyed back in 2018, there was a little bit of interest, but not enough. One of the results was we did get burly listed on the National Register, so good things come out of that. So, as far as an IPP goes, that's the, Brian was talking about, we have the historic districts, the ADC districts, and we have the, also, the conservation districts like Woolen Mills and Martha Jeffs, sort of a historic district light. The individually protected properties fall under the ADC district, that's the more rigid design guidelines and regulations. So, the step would be for you all to, or council to initiate the rezoning, because that's what it would be, amending the zoning map and sending, amending the zoning text to add a, another protected property to the list. It would then be deferred or referred to the Board of Architectural Review for a recommendation. Then it would come to you all for a recommendation that goes to council, so it's, it's their decision, it's not a BAR vote yes or no, or planning commission vote yes or no. And so, that's some of the discussion that Mr. Freeze and Mr. Holuska and I have had the last couple of days, saying, all right, well, how do you, how do you align all those up? One idea was that you all could ask the BAR next Wednesday night to offer a recommendation. I don't know, I'm like, have to look at how I could just put that onto the agenda, but it's not a, it's not the BAR voting to approve or deny something, it's making a recommendation based on a list that I think is in the documents you have. Ideally, though, I think so that there's no, so we play the game right, so to speak, it'd be an initiation from you all at some date such that I could take this to the BAR on the meeting on July nineteenth. Problem is, is you all meet the Tuesday night before, so, so you can see how this is. So, I, I don't know whether you all could ask the BAR for a recommendation, maybe we give it in July so that I have it at least, you know, properly advertised. But otherwise, I don't know how we get to that BAR, sort of that first step in the recommendation process, so. And I'd ask Brian and Mr. Freeze to probably offer more wisdom on that, but then after that, everything follows the same process as the current rezoning that you all are discussing, does that make sense?
So, we, we could not tonight, we could not tonight ask the BAR to make a recommendation next Wednesday?
I think that, I think we could, I think there would be some hesitance to do that, I think it's a little bit of a.
And what is the hesitance?
I think a little bit of that, a lot of it would be, well, where's the applicant on this?
Oh, yeah, we got to talk to them.
And again, we've already sort of.
But if we got the approval of the applicant tonight, and then we made their request.
If you had that, that would help tremendously.
Are you suggesting that we need the approval of the applicant because it's going to be a modification to this rezoning? It's a separate initiation, but we should probably ask them what they think.
It is a, in the code, it is, is the BAR making a recommendation on the, the eligibility, you know, does this make sense or not? Last time the city did this was 2007 and eight, in fact, this property was on the list of about a hundred different properties, and ultimately, I think they only ended up with ten or twelve. The council had asked the BAR for recommendation of properties. So, it was, it was, I don't want to say not, it wasn't informal, but it was council asking the BAR for a recommendation. So, and I said, I think that, I'm not the BAR, you know, Mr. LaHendra obviously sits on it and, you know, probably has more institutional memory with the BAR. I think there would be a little bit of discomfort with bringing something to them, and again, we're meeting next Wednesday because of the holiday. It, it, it just seems, I think it would have to have some real assurances behind it that it's supported by the folks in this room, the applicant is, is interested, and rather than us just trying to do something that expedites the process. But if you're going to bump it to the July nineteenth BAR meeting, then you got to figure out when you're going to have that conversation to officially ask, or I guess the other thing was, when does council meet next and let them request a recommendation from BAR? So, is that enough three-dimensional chess?
Any additional questions for Mr. Warner?
I do have a question on not process. So, we had, recognizing that the national district is different than a local district, and the study was for a national register, right?
No, no, I mean, yes, we, in, we've had kind of a policy of if we're going to evaluate areas, you know, let's get the formal surveys done, and that is, the, the process is done through the, through the Department of Historic Resources and their protocol. The other thing was, that was the big hole in a donut that we hadn't looked at, so it was. The other thing was, that was the big hole in a donut that we hadn't looked at, so it was, it was, it was a place in the city we hadn't reviewed, but.
So could.
Your, the city's decision to establish an IPP really goes beyond, to me, whether this has state or local, or state or national significance. I think its story is very much a local story. I think it's, in fact, I mean, I hate to say this about the architecture, but I think it's the story of that congregation, it's almost more compelling than, than the buildings, although they're fascinating in and of themselves. So, so I think it's a story that's important to this community, and I think it's absolutely completely appropriate to recognize that and acknowledge it regardless of where you might be with state or national designation.
Yeah, so that was sort of my question. When we did that study, this property was not, was recommended to be contributing, but not an individually designated property.
Correct.
Of course, the historic paintball arena across the street was recommended to be an, is an IPP. Why, was it just because it's a local thing?
No, no. It was recommended as eligibility for a, the National Register Historic Places. It was recommended as a contributing structure to the Tenth and Page Historic District at that national, you know, level. As far as locally identifying it as an individual property, that, that determination of, of what was done at the, you know, that, I'm sorry, I end up using too many acronyms, but the, the survey that was done for the Department of Historic Resources, I don't think, you know, just don't even, I mean, it was great, but I think the local story, I could stand here right now and tell you why that should have, why it should be recognized by the city, and for its, its, its local reasons. And I guess its connection to Palmyra, so, which is fascinating, too.
Let's call for Mr. Warner.
I have a question.
Please.
An IPP does not protect the interiors, correct?
No.
So do you have any concern with the, what would be allowed potentially as office or business or any modification to the, to the interior of the specifically church or chapel?
I mean, the B A R does not review, I, I often, you know, have said this, and you've probably heard me say, you know, it can be a big giant room, or it can be a building with a thousand apartments in it, doesn't matter. All that matters is what's outside.
I'm not asking that. I'm asking if you have any concerns.
Yeah. Do I have concern? I can't. I mean, because that's, the zoning is.
Right, but I'm proposing a solution, which would be if the parcel were split and, and certain uses were allowed on the parsonage and certain uses were not allowed on the church. That might be one way to go about that.
You know, I, I want to make sure, also, and I know you, Liz, is that the IPP doesn't put a bell jar over this thing. I mean, there are, it allows alterations, it allows changes. It's just that the B A R reviews them to make sure that they are consistent with the historic character. So, you know, and also, the IPP designation is not a, it doesn't, it doesn't freeze it in time, it doesn't absolutely prevent it from being raised, so. But me personally, I, from what I've heard about how the building is planned to be used, that's how we keep these buildings standing, because they have a purpose that's of value to the owner. And, you know, in some ways, it's like, I don't really, none of my business why they're doing it, but the result is if, if, if their use preserves that building and keeps it viable, then I, and I'm all for it. But yeah, what goes on inside, the B A R simply can't be involved in. Sorry.
Sure, but I'm not asking that. I'm asking if you, as a preservation professional, have any concerns about potential alterations to the interior of the church building?
I, I, I can't, living in an old house, and I'm doing all I can to keep it from falling down. I sympathize. I, I guess I prefer to speak as staff and not, when I speak as myself, I, I take too many down the rabbit hole with me.
The chair supports your, your decision.
That's right. That's right.
I just have another question. It seems to be like the elephant in the room, like we keep talking about weddings at the facility at the property, but that's, where is that in the, in the uses allowed under the, the B2 zoning?
Private club?
That would be under a house of worship.
House of worship.
House of worship.
But house of worship isn't allowed in our law.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. If that's what they wanted to have weddings, they can do that while we work through this.
And there's one last piece on here. The criteria of the evaluation is sort of a, asking us about the current condition of that building. I, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't been in it, I haven't been under it. If it's anything in my, my house, it's probably got some bad spots. So there's, there's a lot of buildings in this town that look great, but, you know, sometimes it might be because the paint's holding together, you know, a side of something. So I don't want to, to, to presume to know what's going on with that building structurally, but that is one of the questions, and that's something I think that the applicant or the owner would have to probably share some information on. And, but I just want to say the most important thing for you all is if you want to move this forward, is sort of determining that at what point and in what way you get this to the B A R for a recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Hulasko, you seem to have some thoughts about wedding uses. Can you share those?
The, obviously, a house of worship is allowed by right in all of our districts. The, I guess, the element of that in terms of what constitutes an acceptable assembly within a house of worship, you're probably, I think a wedding would probably be on pretty good solid ground. There's certainly the Religious Land Uses and Institutionized Persons Act that we have to abide by where a religious kind of assembly of any kind, if we would permit assembly for anything, we have to allow a religious assembly. I think what the applicant is striving for here, though, is the auditorium use, which kind of broadens out to nonreligious events. If they're going to hold concerts, if they're going to hold stuff like that, I think they want to be on, more sound footing zoning-wise. That and the music hall use. So that's really, as an event space, that opens up a lot of events that they could potentially host in the facility. So that, I think that covers it.
Is a nonreligious wedding allowed in R1?
Good question.
It is highly unlikely that we would know.
It's, yes, one, yeah, it's more, this is more of a rhetorical question, you know, could you, could you do it? Yeah, I don't think we would ever get into that. Yeah, but.
I would like to hear from the applicant this time. Thank you very much. Green light. Worrying sound.
Are we all good to go?
We see nothing.
We're missing your face.
My video's up.
We got you on small screen. Just waiting for the projector.
I've got blinking green and yellow lights.
There it goes.
We see a shadow.
It's coming. Just be patient.
We have color. Please, welcome.
All right. Good evening, Chair and members of the commission. First of all, I'd like to just start off, my name's Joe Regg, I'm a project manager for Stoney Point Development Group. With me is Zach Zingchime, he's my, my asset manager. Apologies for not being able to jump in a little earlier than that now, but I do want to go ahead and start off by saying that it is our intent to defer and add the IPP designation to the request. So I know there was a lot of conversation about what we were just kind of going through there, but that is the owner's plan at this time. I do have a presentation ready for everyone. You know, with the hour at which we are now, I don't know if it behooves us better just to review questions that you all have. I feel like everybody's pretty well informed with the, the project or the property and what's going on here. But if you would prefer to have the presentation, I'd be more than happy to present that to you all.
I appreciate any restraint you can show, please.
Let's start off with IPP. Yeah, this is definitely something I think that we're all looking towards doing. You know, the way that this all kind of generated for Gary Holdings LLC was that we were alluded that without having a person living in the parsonage next door of religious aspect, that we would not be able to hold weddings within the property. There was also the case of any form of special events being able to hold it as an auditorium, music venue, a community gathering space. That was really important to us, and it was something that we have been in connection with, the Tenth and Page Neighborhood Association, as well as some of the Venable Association and Rose Hill Associations. This is something that is important to us, you know, the part, a lot of what we were hoping to do with the entire Dairy Central area is to bring forth a, a strong sense of community and to be able to appropriately, what's the best word, to, to appropriately bring everybody together in some way, shape, or form. The Zone 1 RS did not allow us to do everything that we were hoping to do, so therefore, we applied for a rezoning in a B2 facet. The question that you all had concerning technology center, mostly what we're looking for there is a co-working space, was really the thought process of Chris Henry, as well as the other owners involved with this property. That's mostly the designation that they are looking for in that factor. As for renovations of what has been done up until this point, I was the project manager on this one. Mostly what we tried to do is repair the facade. We went to the interiors and we really tried to update the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. We added code-compliant bathrooms, as well as made the entire church and rear parish center into an ADA compliant roof space. We added additional lighting. Really, we tried to keep as much of the existing structure as humanly possible. The rear wall in the back was starting to cave in. We, we re-supported that, built it back, exposed the rafters in the parish center just to kind of give it a little bit more of a vaulted ceiling feel in there that replicates the same as what the church aspects look like. And then re-glazed the windows and the glass throughout, just to, to bring all of that beautiful, beautiful natural light in there. If any of you ever decide that you would like to go in there before we make a final decision, by all means, don't hesitate to let me know. We'd be more than happy to show this to all of you. It's a beautiful space. The shame with the beautiful space that we have is that we really haven't been able to utilize it, and the big thing for us is to do what we need to, both for the community and for ourselves, to be able to utilize this space.
Thank you.
Zach, do you have anything you want to chime in on, sir?
No, I, I think just to add on, I, I all, Zach Zingchime, as Joe mentioned, I work with Joe as a management with Stoney Point, and just, you know, I, I highly encourage, I've been to Charlottesville in the last five months, moved, moved into town here recently, and having been able to see the inside and the work that Joe and the team did, I mean, it really is stunning, and just echo all of Joe, Joe's thoughts and sentiments of being a place of engagement and, and connectivity with the community. And, yeah, what I go, what I go is invitation, though, for any, for any tours to see it in person, because it really is spectacular.
Thank you. I'd like to hear questions for the applicant at this time. Mr. Mitchell?
Maybe not for the applicant, but for staff relating to the applicant. What do we need to do to accept their request to defer? Do we have to vote on accepting that, or is there a request to defer all we need?
We should be okay with the request to deferral. Yeah.
Is there any need to proceed in, in this structure, then, on this item?
So we are scheduled for a public hearing, so.
That's happening.
We may have people who are awaiting that, so we should give them the opportunity.
Do we have people waiting on that?
Well, let's see. We have, we have attendees. I don't know at this point, we haven't asked for raising hands.
Okay.
But we could do that.
Does anyone have questions for the applicant at this time, given this proposed deferral? Yes, please.
Just got a question on the private club use designation, and if that was intended for the co-working space, or what you were thinking with that? Because it'd be a shame to close it off to the public. I know that's not what you want to do.
Yeah, we would not be trying to close this off to the public. Private club is mostly looking as a co-working space. I'd probably have to ask Brian exactly what the designation states for a private club on that, but mostly it's, it's the same. It's a co-working space, being able to utilize it during the day for people who would like to be able to better themselves in some way, shape.
Additional questions for the applicant?
I have a few. The, so is there any interest in, or in developing an agreement with the community for their use of the building at lower rates? Would that be something that you'd be willing to pursue?
Absolutely. At this time, with the Tenth and Page community, we already have agreements for their neighborhood meetings. They actually hold them down in the brick cellar in the event space at Dairy Central. The hope was always that I'd be able to hold these within the, within the church, and that's going to be something that we are going to continue to do. I also know that the owners have been willing to nurture some form of agreement, just with a discounted rate for neighborhood association or neighborhood events. And if we're doing larger events, the potential of us sponsoring those events for people that are in need, and we would do it all on a case-by-case basis. As for a written agreement, I don't believe it's been anything that we've had to pursue in the past. I do not anticipate it would be something that we would be afraid to get into, depending on exactly what the terms of the agreement would be.
Thank you. The parsonage, what is your intention about reuse of that building?
Currently, the parsonage is for rent. We've had, since we did the renovation in 2020, we've had two different tenants that have moved in and out of that unit, and that will continue to be our designation for that. We proffered out all other potential residential units, with the exception of the existing one of the parsonage.
And so you did some repairs to the parsonage as well, when you?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Good. The interior photo of the church that I saw in the materials for tonight showed a, a exposed frame wall at the chancel inn. Was that because of the work that you all were doing at the time, or has the rear dos and those fittings been removed?
That was because of the work that we were doing at the time. We had to remove the stage above. There was no finished material on the backside there, so that we came back and tried to remake the, what the existing chair rail and paneling on the backside were, and we added just more or less like a message board above to, to finish that aspect out. The other items that we included in that area was also HVAC returns. We removed them from the floor and we put them into the sidewall that goes through the breezeway space.
So the items that show up in a older photograph, rear dos and screens around the choirs, very carpenter Gothic woodwork, all that was gone when.
That is correct.
You all purchased the building? Okay.
It still was existing when we purchased the building, but there were a bit of an infestation in some of it, so we, that needed to be removed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Palmer, do you have questions for the applicant?
No, I'm, I'm fine. Thanks.
Thank you. Council, questions for the applicant?
Did you miss that sign?
I've got, what is, what is it?
Chair, I've got two questions.
Oh, thank you.
The first is, I recall from the Dairy Central meetings that this whole discussion of nonprofit meeting space came up, and discounted space, I guess you guys have a meeting in the basement now. Was that a, a proffer or condition of that SUP? Like, was that a formal agreement? Or was that just an informal, you know, letting them have it? have it?
To the best of my knowledge, that was an informal agreement. I have nothing in writing that formally states that. I do have several emails that I can refer to from a legal standpoint that say that this is something that we are willing to do and continue to do so.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense. Generally, I think at the Planning Commission and our counsel tend to like having these sorts of things written down, so that in case property changes over, changes hands, obviously that's maybe less likely for Dairy Central and more likely for the random house and church across the street. It would be nice, I think, to have that sort of thing written down.
Sure.
The other question, maybe this is for staff, looking at the use matrix for B2, technology-based businesses is by special use permit. And so it would continue to be by special use permit if, yeah, so we can't rezone or proffer anything into being by right. So, all right, that maybe helps answer Commissioner Russell's question. It's kind of wild to me that offices are allowed, but graphic design businesses need a special use permit, but there we are. Thanks.
Indeed. Lesk, call for questions for the applicant?
I have none.
Thank you very much. I believe we are ready to hear from the public.
All right. We do not have any in-person public at this time. We do have those virtual. So if we have any of our virtual attendees interested in speaking to this item, please raise your hand in the application. We do have one hand. Emily Dreyfus is our first speaker. Emily, you'll have three minutes after we unmute you. Emily?
Thank, thank you. My name's Emily Dreyfus and I work with the Legal Aid Justice Center as community organizer, and we're located at 1,000 Preston Avenue, right across the street, basically. And I was hoping to hear from residents of the Tenth and Page neighborhood, because I have talked with several people and have heard concerns about the impact that Dairy Market has had on their neighborhood, especially related to parking. And I just want to raise that. I don't know if the original plans made it clear that Dairy Market was going to charge for parking, but I think that's had the impact of putting cars from UVA students and others visiting the shops that are parking, I mean, I know as of, that they're at Legal Aid in our parking lot occasionally, but I think they're mainly in the Tenth and Page neighborhood and that that's making life pretty difficult for a lot of the residents when they try to come home and find a spot. And then the other thing I would love to know more about is what is the communication with the neighborhood association and whether this topic has come before them, what their feedback has been, and what the arrangements are for not just a reduction in price, but actually donating space to the neighborhood association, because I think that would be a positive step. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional?
Do we have any additional speakers? We have an additional hand. Shelby Edwards is our next speaker. Shelby, you are on with the commission and you have three minutes to speak.
Hello, good evening. I would just like to reiterate what Emily Dreyfus has shared. Also, my name is Shelby Edwards. I'm born and raised, Shelby Marie Edwards. I'm born and raised in Charlottesville, Virginia, and I'm also the executive director of Charlottesville Public Housing Association of Residents in the Tenth and Page neighborhood. FAR actually works with, in collaboration with the West Haven residents, and I certainly don't think that we have been made aware of, so I'm not totally sure what involvement there has been with the neighborhood. So I definitely encourage some community involvement. And as Ms. Dreyfus said before me, if we could talk more openly about how we're going to use the space, perhaps it is donated to the community for free use. I was not in leadership during the discussions of Dairy Market being built, but I would definitely be interested in to hear more about what community engagement looks like. Thank you.
All right, we do have a third hand. Our next speaker is Carl Schwartz. Carl, you're open with the commission. You have three minutes.
First, I just want to say, thank you very much to the applicant for voluntarily offering the IPP status. I really appreciate that. I just want to mention that, you know, the applicant, they did come to our neighborhood association meeting. Our meetings are not, not super well-attended. I think we had 10 people at that meeting. It was announced on the neighborhood Facebook page. It was emailed to a number of people. So there was, there was a community meeting about this. There was a discussion. We also, we meet in the basement of Dairy Market. Chris Henry has attended a number of our meetings, so there is communication. I mean, obviously, there are things that the neighborhood would like. We always, you know, plenty of things that we'd like to see, but I just want to clear up that we have been, we have been meeting with them, and this was one of the things that was requested at the, at that meeting, was this IPP status. So I'm really appreciative of this, of them voluntarily offering it. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have any additional hands at this time.
Thank you all. I would like to close public comment at this time. What is needed for us to accept a deferral? If anything. Ms. Creasy?
You all can choose to, to accept the applicant's deferral formally or not. It's, I mean, they've provided the deferral, so the clock stops and we regroup.
All right. I note that the clock has stopped. Thank you. I believe this public hearing is at an end. Do you concur, Mary?
I would like just to know exactly what the next steps are. The applicant has deferred. What do we do next? I know Jeff kind of gave us a, we didn't know what we do next, but what are the exact next steps?
Please.
With the applicant's request to defer, they have the ability to amend their application, to alter that. They can alter the proffer statement, whatever details of that application they want. We'll give them a deadline by which we need to receive any amended, amendment, amended documents, and then we would advertise it for a July public hearing and repeat the process that we've done tonight.
Fine, thank you.
Would that include VAR seeing it in July or tomorrow?
If the request from the applicant is what they've indicated, then yes, we will, you know, we will, I'll confer with Mr. Werner about their agenda availability, but it sounds like we're going to try to get it in front of them this month.
And do you need a recommendation or a request to, for VAR from us?
I don't believe so. I believe if the applicant's willing to say that, which, I mean, they've already stated it, if they just email it to me, then we can kind of, you know, move that up.
Good.
How are we feeling? Counsel, you're free. You may, you may leave if you wish.
Could I ask one question before we do so? Friday, we got a copy of a letter from the Historic Resources Committee that was sent to you and to me, and I assume it was distributed more widely as well, saying that the Historic Resources Committee had asked that the Planning Commission and the city council initiate the process necessary to establish 415 10th Street Northwest as a locally designated historic property. I assume that's the equivalent of an IPP, as we've been talking about tonight. What is that process?
So, in the zoning ordinance, if you go to the conditional zoning section, there are three ways to start the rezoning of a property. The one before you is, is item three, which is the most common one, which is an owner of a property or a contract purchaser requests a change in zoning, and they submit a rezoning application. However, the Planning Commission can by motion initiate a rezoning, and city council can by resolution initiate a rezoning. In both of those cases, we then have an initiation that comes before the Planning Commission and city council, whoever wants to initiate it, and they discuss starting the rezoning process. So, I think-
Now, you're using rezoning in a different way from the way we normally use rezon?
No, no.
No, an IPP is a-
Is a separate zone?
It is an overlay zone.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I understand that. There you go. Thank you.
But you're most welcome to remain with us. How are we feeling? Do we want a short break or do we want to move forward on Lachlan Hill?
Well, let's thank our applicant and say goodbye.
Thank you and goodbye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Break or move forward?
Let's move on.
I hear move? Let's go. Mr. Halesk, can you take us to Lachlan Hill?
Thank you all.
Good night, thank you very much.
Good night, y'all.
Members of the commission, this is your final item for, on this agenda is a discussion, preliminary discussion regarding Block 4B of Lachlan Hill. I did forward you a memo that was not in the packet that hopefully explains that item a little further, rather than just the attachments. And a representative of Milestone Partners is here, Frank Stoner, who would like to discuss this further, but as I indicated in the pre-meeting, the concept plan that is in front of you shows Block 4B of Lachlan Hill as being developed in the form of two 24-unit apartment buildings. The applicant submitted a site plan, preliminary site plan, to the city showing 11 single-family detached houses, which led city staff to indicate that this did not comply with the zoning of the property and led to the discussion that's coming before you today. The, one of the avenues that the applicant would like to pursue is whether or not the Director of Neighborhood Development Services in his capacity in the code to amend an SUP or grant an amendment of an SUP or a PUD. If there is a plan for this block that the Planning Commission would support, that and direct the Director to approve. So that's kind of the context of it. One of the staff can, in discussing this in the past, one of the items we kind of have thrown out there that might be appropriate here is whether or not some of those missing middle types that we often talk about, not single-family detached, but again, not an apartment building, which I think the applicant can tell you some of the difficulties around potentially trying to implement the plan that is approved on the lot. So some missing middle type housing or something like that, but this is really just a discussion and an opportunity to kind of bring the issue to the commission and see where our opinions are on potential changes to the block. And I know Mr. Stoner is present and may wish to speak further. I know he has a video also.
Mr. Halesk, can you remind us what block it is?
Block 4B.
4B, thank you.
Any questions for staff on this, at this time?
What did you say, that the density or, you know, the number of dwelling units originated with that?
So, it depends on the section of the code that you're looking at. The code of development, a PUD, the applicants provide a, basically a code of development and a concept plan that dictate how that project will be developed. Block 4B in its illustrative drawing shows two apartment buildings, 24 units each for 48 total units. There's another description of Block 4B, a narrative description, that talks about multifamily apartments. There's also a use matrix. That use matrix shows all residential types being by right, and there's also a table that shows, identifies the different blocks and the number of units that minimum and maximum would be permitted in each of those blocks. The minimum number of units for Block 4B was 15. So you do, don't have a unified, you know, indication across the entire concept plan. There's different pieces that potentially permit different things, so really getting some clarity on that is part of the idea here.
Additional questions?
So there are two use matrices in these, I guess not the staff reports, the code of development. One of them, I mean, they both have, you know, detached and townhouse by right in all of them, but one of them only has multifamily allowed in Block 4B and the other, the other has multifamily allowed, there's no headers, but I'm assuming it's three and two, maybe.
Okay.
Do we know which of those is right?
I believe there are two documents in there because this, we've gone through this process again, once before. So the original, it shouldn't contain the original concept plan that was approved, I believe in 2012, and then an additional one that was improved in 2015, and those dates might be wrong. I'm trying to do this off the top of my head here, but that amendment, that amendment that occurred several years later was addressing primarily part of block, part of Phase Two. There was a cottage block that was identified that the applicant felt they could not develop as they had shown it, so they amended the PUD to do something, into something that they could, but they did touch other parts of the concept plan. So I believe that use matrix was amended, and that may have been when they made the change.
So do we think the second one is the current one?
Second one would be the correct one.
And then, since that one added multifamily to three and four A, did we get any multifamily in those?
I'll defer to the applicant about the overall build-out, but I don't believe there's anything specifically multifamily unless you're counting townhouses. Keep in mind, in three, three or more units in a building is considered multifamily in our code?
Yeah, the use matrix doesn't, but yeah, fair, thanks.
Additional questions on this? Can we hear from the applicant?
Sure.
Good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Frank Stoner. I'm with Milestone Partners. We are the developers of Lachlan Hill. I know it's late, so I'll try to be brief. I did have a short presentation just to orient everybody to the neighborhood. I don't know if we can play that or if everybody's seen it or-
Briefly, please.
Okay, cool. Apologize for the music. It's like, I don't know if we'll be able to hear music, but.
I thought you were kidding.
So you're actually looking, oh, so now you're looking at the city portion, a portion of this development's in the city and a portion is in the county. The largest portion is in the city and that's what you're looking at right here. The project I actually taken 24 years to develop, even though we got our code of development approved in 2012 and then amended in 2015, this is a project that has taken a long time. And so, we spent a lot of time trying to get it right. Yes, we built a bridge over Meadow Creek. We have an incredibly diverse amount of housing. We have 13 HABATED families living in our neighborhood. There'll be another two coming in Phase Four. I believe we have 15 accessory dwelling units. The property we're talking about, 4B, is, is right here. It's up against the golf course. It slopes from back to front. It slopes from back to front. Sorry, I'm not sure why this is so jerky, but. Anyway, for those of you who haven't been there, just gives you sort of an idea of what the community is like. The principles that were really important to us when we created the code were, one, that we wanted it to be compact and urban. We've achieved that. We have, we're at a net density of seven, little over seven units an acre. We wanted it to be diverse and we wanted it to be diverse in every way. And I think we've achieved that as well. So we have all the housing types you just saw. We are incredibly economically, socially, ethnically diverse. It's, it's a really interesting community and people move there specifically because it's so diverse. So we wanted to focus on high-quality community spaces. And so obviously lots were very small, but the community spaces were valuable and we wanted to make sure we did them right. And so you saw Central Park. We have another park that's, will be on the park space that will be on the Meadow Creek. There's a greenway that we're waiting for the city to build, which hopefully will get done this year. Yeah. Lastly, we really wanted to create opportunities for small local builders. I've been in this business a long time and what happened in 2007, 2008 is that small local builders got crushed. And today, four builders control over 80% of our market. And they control it because they control lot inventory. And they are production builders and they build the same thing over and over again. They're good at what they do, they're cost efficient. But for creative, small, local builders, they essentially got excluded from the market. Because we wanted such a diverse community, small local builders became an important, critical aspect of our success formula. So we've had eight local builders in, in Lachlan Hill. They all build different types of products, different architecture, and that is the essence of what Lachlan Hill is. And so we've relied heavily on them and they have relied heavily on us because they don't have many opportunities elsewhere in the city or the county. Some communities in Crozay that some of them participate in, but for the most part, they're excluded. It's very difficult for them to find lots. So when we got into phase three, there was a lot of demand. We filed an application for phase four, which is actually in the county. That process took, it's taken two years to get approval. In the meantime, we got builders who all of a sudden don't have lots. And so we looked at this particular block and we thought about our original vision and we thought about where we are now. And a couple of things occurred to us. One, when I look at the neighborhood and if you drive through the neighborhood and you look at that site and you think about what, what will end up having to be a four-story building because you have to park under it, it feels very out of scale with the neighborhood. It's at the back end of the neighborhood, so from a traffic perspective, it's not really ideal. We put it in the original plan because we knew if we didn't put it in multifamily in the original plan somewhere, we'd never get it approved later. If we had 100 people living in the neighborhood and all of a sudden we wanted to build 48 units, you can imagine what that would have looked like. So we put in, I think our perspective now is that conditions have changed, the market has changed. We too favor trying to figure out how to build that missing middle. And I think we've considered the possibility of maybe a small multifamily or a townhouse block at the end of, of the street that you just looked at. We feel pretty strongly, though, that two 24-unit multifamily buildings is just out of scale. Is it less profitable? No, probably not. But one unintended consequence is it, it then starves our small local builders that we're depending on to help us get through phase four and the diversity that, that we value. We, 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 we put them in a very difficult spot because all of a sudden they don't have lots. So what I would ask today is that you consider the bigger picture, that you look at the quality of what we've constructed, that you look at the diversity that we've built. And I'd welcome the opportunity to work with staff to establish a streetscape for this final block that, that everybody's happy with, but would appreciate the opportunity to do it in the way that, that we feel makes the most sense in today's market. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions and again, don't want to take up a lot of time, but would love to get your thoughts about.
Thank you.
So are you proposing single-family detached?
I think we're proposing a mix. So we would, we would do probably a block of towns at the, at the bottom of the hill and then a series of single-family. And we actually hired two different architects in town to help us design houses that would work. These are obviously small, tight lots. The grades are very difficult and challenging. But it would give us that mix, which we have throughout the neighborhood. You know, we have one, two, three townhouse blocks in the neighborhood now. We have a fourth townhouse block in phase four. And we intentionally separated them so that you didn't have a townhouse section and a single-family section. They're all integrated, whoa, they're all integrated sort of seamlessly. And I, and I think that would be our intent here is not to, not to build a whole street out of, of townhouses.
Mr. Mitchell? Mr. LeHedder, please.
No, no, he asked the question that I had.
I'm asking, do you have a question?
No, no, he asked the question that I had.
Oh, I see. I bet you know. We did it. We did it. Mr. Bob, please.
I had a question. I quickly glanced at the staff report. There was a mention of the, of an affordable housing proffer. What is the impact to the affordable housing units by decreasing the, the two apartment buildings that we have to what you're requesting?
Yeah. So if you look at the, if you look at the original proffer, it's, I would say by today's standards, fairly, well, it's, it's, we're at 15% affordable. Most of that affordable has been achieved through for-sale housing. We originally committed to establish a housing trust fund, which we did. We committed to funding with $150,000. We've ended up putting $300,000 into it. We partnered with Habitat for the 13 affordable units that we have in the neighborhood so far. They will manage the housing trust fund because it's, it's all Habitat residents. So the impact of removing the 48 units from affordability standpoint, if you look at the proffer, is almost irrelevant. That was not a factor in the decision. I'm a big affordable housing believer.
Ms. Russell, please.
So is it correct that there would be no multifamily in, in the, in the development? Not here?
Well, again, I think there's a possibility that we could either do towns or we could do a small multifamily building at the bottom of the hill. We just feel like the scale is, the scale of 48 units is, is inappropriate.
Have you all figured out the trail connectivity to get from that Meadow Creek Bridge up through the neighborhood and into the Penn Park? No, that's kind of messy.
We do. So that's another challenge on this particular block because the RTF trail actually runs behind these units.
Yeah.
So we've got to fit the trail in. We've got to fit whatever buildings go in there as well. And it's tight. There's also water line easement back there, which makes it even more challenging.
Yeah, no more, no more questions. Thank you.
Mr. Stolzenberg?
So to be clear, it's not that this is financially infeasible, it's that it's out of scale.
That's our perspective, yes.
And so when staff says you submitted a proposal for 11 detached units-
Yes.
Is that what you're proposing now or you're saying it's mixed?
I think, or what drove the decision to, to file for the 11 units was to get these lots as quickly as we could for home builders because they're out of lots. The road's already there, utilities could be put in quickly. So it was, we, our, our perspective was it was, would give us the opportunity to deliver lots to them more quickly. That process is taking longer than I think we had expected. And quite honestly, given that we believed we had the right to build single-family in, according to our code, it really didn't occur to us that this would be an issue that would come to the planning commission. But I understand why it's here. I'm not sure what the value of a by right use in a particular block is if you can't actually build it, but.
I mean, you do have the minimum number of units in your code, right? So you could do 15 detached-
We could.
And that wouldn't be here, right?
Yeah. And quite honestly, we've looked at, I, I sent to Mr. Freeze and Mr. Haleska, we did, we've done a book of options for that particular block that looks at all kinds of possibilities. At one point, Stony Point Design Build was going to, was going to do a block of courtyard attached homes along that street. Of course, they kind of changed their focus and so, again, part of their challenge for us is our builders don't, for the most part, don't have the capability to do something that substantial. An attached, you know, a set of attached buildings that, in this case, was 15 attached. That's a serious financial commitment for them. That's really, becomes difficult logistically. So again, trying to support them, trying to find things that are, that, that from a financial standpoint will work for them because we need them to stay in the neighborhood.
So have you considered a set of smaller buildings or breaking up the buildings more? So instead of two large buildings, there were, say, four smaller buildings? Or your builder is not capable of doing anything that isn't single-family or IRC?
Yeah. Our, our builders are not, I mean, somebody has, they're, they're not in the business of building and owning eight or 12-unit apartment buildings. So we would have to get somebody else to build those. These are, these are your single-family home builders.
And so looking at, earlier, I think you said you had four builders?
We've had eight in the neighborhood.
And then presently?
Presently, we have four.
The builders you're talking about?
Yeah.
So I was looking at your website, I see five. Is Southern still on there?
Southern only built a townhouse block.
Gotcha.
One townhouse block.
And so I guess my hangup is, you know, for other times within your code of development, where you had a denser form of housing, you've been willing to go to a different builder because you have to meet your code of development. And in fact, the, the zoning law driving PUDs says the point of a PUD, or one of the major contributors to a PUD is having that diversity of housing types in there. And it seems to me you've gotten finally to this last housing type that you haven't done yet. And it's just easier to break that out into detached units, which I note, you know, I see a very bimodal distribution of, of housing prices in this neighborhood. You have your Habitat units, which are obviously quite affordable. And then you have your detached units are some of the very most expensive homes in the city, you know, 95th percentile or so. And, you know, while I think it's a good point that this won't affect your, you know, proffered subsidized affordable housing, it does seem to undermine the idea of having a diversity of housing types to create a diversity of residents by eliminating the possibility for that kind of middle section of residents who don't get subsidized housing, but, you know, can afford an $800, $900,000 house. Don't you think so?
So a couple of things I want to point out. One, we brought in production builders to build what small builders couldn't build. So that's why Southern came in and built that block of townhouses. Sam Craig came in and went, built a block of townhouses in phase one. During that period of time, we had a plethora of available single-family lots. And we also had cottage lots. So one of the comments that was brought up is we, we had a cottage block in phase two. And because the city wouldn't allow us to carve that up in a way that made building those cottages possible at a density that made sense because the zoning code wouldn't allow it, we changed our original vision and we put, we built, we built cottages. So we have six cottages plus two Habitat units that, that sit on the, on that green. And then we have single-family that wrap around behind it. And that, that was, from our perspective, the best solution, given the circumstances. So those cottages were low threes at the time, high twos, low threes. So I, I think it's a little bit unfair to say that there's nothing in the middle because there were both townhouses in the threes and fours and there were cottages.
Are those along Bennett?
Those are along Bennett. Yeah, that's correct.
Now those are in the 450 range. So you're right, that's fair. That's-
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's, that's where the market's-
Those in the attached are those in the middle range.
Yeah. Those, those are, yeah. That, that is the middle now, unfortunately.
So is it fair to say that if your county phase were going faster or further along and you had lots there, you wouldn't be coming to us for this modification?
I don't think we would have come with the modification we came with because, again, we were feeling pressure to, to get lots for these builders. I, you know, we, I'm, I'm open to conversations about hybrid versions of what we're talking about. I think it's, again, I think it's, I, I, I'm totally committed to affordable housing. I think the city needs housing of all types, though. And quite honestly, there aren't a lot of opportunities for housing at the other end either these days. So I think Lachlan Hill is a beautifully diverse community, the most, one of the most diverse in the city. We're very proud of what we've done. I'd like to finish it and I'd like to finish it in the way that we feel is most appropriate and that, and that, and that the folks who live there feel is most appropriate. And so that may include a, a building, but I, I need some, I need some lots. And so that, that's really what I'm asking for.
Mr. Palmer, you've been terribly patient. Do you have any questions or thoughts on this one?
No, I don't think so. I appreciate you asking, though. Thanks.
Absolutely. So I'm, I'm hearing a, a lot of different components here and I appreciate your transparency on, on sort of the, the issues here. It's not simple.
Yeah.
It sounds like there's a financial component here. I'm subtly reminded that we have a strategic fund for economic development so that we can keep small businesses active and thriving in the city, like these eight builders you mentioned. I'm suddenly wondering if that money could be activated to help to solve this problem temporarily. Seems like a possibility.
Don't know, yeah. I, I don't know much about that. And I don't know, you know, I would assume builders would have to come directly to the city for, for that kind of stuff.
Mr. Haleska, could you, could you speak to that issue? Are you familiar with this?
I'm not familiar with it, no.
Me neither. I just know it's there. Thank you. Additional questions on this one?
Sir, why can't you do 15 detached houses, as you said, on just smaller lots? Is it, are you hitting up against a minimum lot size?
Yeah, it's really, gets really tight. So you pretty, if you're going to get to 15, you need to attach them.
Yep.
Now, you could do duplexes, right? I will say, there are complications with the grade as well. So aside from being shallow, the grade's moving uphill sort of constantly. So that, again, is what makes these smaller modules fit with the terrain better. Yeah. Could there be detached? Yes. There, there could be detached. Could there be attached in a duplex form? Yeah. Again, I, you know, part of, part of it is what, what our builders want, what they need, what there's demand for. And so we try to be responsive to what they see in the marketplace and what they feel like they need. And I think, I would, I would hope you guys are sensitive to that. That speaks to where the demand's not being filled elsewhere in the city.
And then last question, I promise. It looks like you have a remaining- It looks like you have a remaining townhouse block that's undeveloped on the northeast corner.
We do.
Do you guys have plans for that already? Is that something we could re-
We're hoping one of our builders, so one of the strategies was to have one of these smaller builders, in this case Arcadia, take that townhouse block. That's a big nut for him. He's trying to pull it off because I don't want to bring another production builder back in. I don't want to bring Southern in. Southern wanted all the townhouse blocks, the block they built plus the other two or three. And we said no because they wanted to build the same product. And we felt pretty strongly that it needed to be something different.
Yep.
So he's going to, he's going to try to pull that block off. That, I'm hoping, may help him bridge the gap here. But so far, he has not been able to get a design completed and get funding from a bank, commitment from a bank to take down that many units at one, or that many lots at one time.
We've got a couple of questions proposed for discussion. Do we feel like we're at a place where we could start answering these questions?
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing, too. Mr. Mitchell, what residential unit types would the commission support block be?
Well, of course, I'd love to see more multifamily. But I can deal with that. I like the idea of having a few multifamily units at the bottom of the hill that you've suggested, then scaling up with the other more detached stuff. And yes, I think we can delegate to the director.
Mr. Bob?
I agree with what Commissioner Mitchell said.
Mr. Leder?
So I think I understood you saying, I may just be agreeing with you, but I'll say it my way. Yeah, I'd like to see more units in this area. I'm curious why you all selected the, a site next to, overlooking the golf course for these multifamily large units. I would have thought that that would have been more attractive as small or a single-family detached.
Yeah.
So I'm just, but that's not, it's not a financial issue that you're wanting to go back to single-family detached because it is next to the golf course?
No, it's not, I mean, is it a financial issue? It isn't as much as this builder issue is a financial issue for us. So if we lose these small independent builders, that obviously is a blow and not, they're not easy to replace.
Yeah.
I think from a capital standpoint, is it challenging when you're building two, you know, 48 units as opposed to 250 units? Yeah, it's more challenging. Costs have gone up, so that costs have skyrocketed. The single-family market's been more adept at handling that, I think, than the multifamily market. Rents have gone up dramatically as a result of these cost increases, and we don't like that either. So it's not a great time to build. If we were going to build two big multifamily buildings, it's not a great time to build. But that's sort of secondary to the other issues, which are that, from a scale perspective, it just doesn't feel, it feels, and, you know, when we put it in originally, again, it was an effort, if the site, you could see, you could see a multifamily building working, you could park under it. You could see it maybe being desirable to be up against the golf course. I mean, there were a lot of things at the time that we thought, yeah, this might, it might work. I, you know, we've been at it for quite some time. And I'm not making this decision because I'm trying to avoid a proffer or I think I can make more money. It's really a decision about what we think is right for the neighborhood and best for the neighborhood. And I would hope you guys would give us some deference there because I think we've done a damn good job, quite honestly. I think it's one of the most unique and exciting neighborhoods in the city. And it took a lot of work to make it that way.
Well, I just, I'm, there's a reason why we have PUDs for the diversity of housing types. And I'm just a little disappointed to see that it's heading back towards a bunch of single-family homes lined up. I know it's not Levitt Town, but still. That gets away from the whole concept and the creativity of a PUD.
Yeah, no, I understand. I mean, again, our goal when we designed it, nobody at the city asked us to put those multifamily buildings there. Nobody told us, oh, we want, that was our decision.
But it may have been a factor into allowing or approving the PUD.
I don't think so. I mean, that's a different, it was a different time back then. But, yeah, I, again, I dare say, if we had put single-family there and tried to go back and put multifamily today, I think it'd be, that would have been very, very difficult.
Ooh, not in this group.
Not, no. But, I mean, everywhere else.
All right.
But anyway, I understand, yeah, I certainly understand your concern.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're seeing a common theme and getting consistent feedback. It feels a little like not getting what the community was promised in that original PUD to go back so drastically from multifamily to its multifamily to single-family. So, you know, my advice would be to look for some middle ground, like we've talked about. But it's a great neighborhood. You know, I can understand why people would want to be there.
Thank you. Mr. Stolzenberg?
Yeah, I think to the extent that it would be difficult to add it in today, it would be difficult less for the planning commission and for council. And I think more the, it would be difficult maybe for the residents. And I know you guys are fetching quite high prices for these buildable detached lots. And that's a testament to the quality of the neighborhood you've built. On the other hand, it sort of seems like, really getting the sense, that the fact that so many people have moved into these very nice houses in this very nice neighborhood is driving the fact that they don't want a bunch of apartments down the street. And I do think it undermines the intent of the PUD. It's, I mean, again, directly in our code, I mean, it's one thing to have detached and attached and some cottages, and another to have detached, attached, and multifamily. And I'm hesitant to say, well, just take all of the multifamily out and replace it with detached. I think, as Commissioner Russell said, there's probably middle ground to be found. You know, it could be, you know, as flexible as splitting it into similar lots to what you're thinking for detached, but reserving a couple of them to build a product that's something like a sixplex or an eightplex. That's much less bulky than a 24-unit building. And, but, you know, and so fits into the neighborhood, perhaps, and doesn't provide like a big bookending view that blocks the golf carts beyond. But that provides opportunities for, you know, single-floor living in a smaller unit in a multifamily building that's going to hit a lower price point. Though, again, overall, I don't think it's going to be all that financially ruinous for you. And I think if you can, if you can try to fit some of that multifamily in, it would be reasonable to allow some amount of detached in the remaining parts. I also think you might have an opportunity with that remaining townhouse block if Arcadia can't pull it off. Instead of building or bringing in some larger builder to just build a townhouse block, that might be a place where you could stick one bigger multifamily building. In fact, one of the townhouse blocks you have already looks like a multifamily building. So something to think about, but I think just blanket approval for 11 detached is undermining it. And, you know, I didn't pull up the old videos of council back when they approved this, but I'm sure we can. And I would be surprised if they had zero interest in multifamily, again, because it is a standard of review for PUDs. And if they didn't consider that as part of their approval, then they wouldn't have been doing their jobs.
Mr. Palmer, did you want to share some thoughts on this topic?
No, I don't have any further comments. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just listening.
So it's an interesting time. You know, the costs are absolutely crazy. It's hard to get anything done, but the demand is enormous. And strategically, you know, we've got the new comp plan in, rezoning coming, so this new types of building types are becoming possible that haven't been possible in a century. We're talking about stacked townhouses, you know, eightplexes, you know, plexes of every kind and description. And we don't have builders who can do that yet. Our code is anticipating builders who can do something that we don't have yet. So I think that this is strategically an interesting place to meet the moment, to meet the need. Putting a lot on you to solve all those problems, but if you could do some of it, that would be very helpful. It doesn't have to be, you know, big apartment buildings, but more affordable, more creative missing-middle types of homes, I think, is what is needed more broadly, and I think also in this case. Any additional comments or questions? Does that help you?
Yeah, no, that helps. And I, we're, again, we're open-minded to somewhere in between. Again, I agree. I think the missing middle is very desirable and difficult to execute, but necessary in the city. You know, we'll have to, we'll, I guess, it seems like there's a general consensus that we could work with staff to figure out exactly what that mix is. But I appreciate your willingness to also accommodate some detached in the block because we think that's important as well.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your service.
Yeah, thank you.
And to your point about builders doing alternative housing forms.
Yes.
We have seen, or rather, maybe are about to see, one of those interesting housing forms, a sort of 12-plex with kind of internal townhouses and then incorporated studios and smaller units, all in one building as part of the, what is it called, the Mount View development that's coming up? We've also seen, or the county's seen it over in Whitegate Village in Crozay. It is a local builder. It might not be the perfect site for it. It's kind of designed for sites that slope down. But, you know, there is, I think, an appetite in the local area to build more innovative product. That, again, has a much smaller footprint that would leave room for some of the lots you're looking for as well. So I encourage you to explore that sort of thing.
Yeah.
So do builders not like joint ventures? You know, you get two builders to do it together to do something in the middle?
You know, it depends on who the builder is.
Okay.
So.
And how well they get along with the others?
Well, builders fall into, so you've got sort of small residential builders, right? They're home builders, that's what they do, that's what they're used to. They've got a box, they're comfortable if they can stay in that box. They may not have enough staff or the expertise to do more complex multifamily. And then you've got big builders, you know, the Horrigan's of the world, or that, you know, that's at a different scale.
Yeah.
You've got a few contractors in town that can do that, you know, the stuff in the middle. But, yeah, it's a little more nuanced and challenging. And obviously, it's a different proposition if it's being built for rent versus being built for sale. So I think there are opportunities for both. And again, I think that, you know, it's absolutely needed. It just, unfortunately, the capital markets in our business typically gravitate toward the most efficient solution, which is, tends to be the largest complex you can, you know, create. And I understand, but, yes, it doesn't work that well when you're trying to do infill.
I'll take you again.
Anyway.
Well, good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Do we have additional issues to discuss, or are we ready for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I hear a motion to adjourn.
Again, if you need to.
I'll take it. Good night all. Thank you very much.